Council stand in session. Ah, that was very good. Uh, let's go to roll call.
Ms. Romero?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Durham?
Here.
Mrs. Scott?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres?
Here.
Mr. Kozak?
Mayor Rothschild?
Here. Uh, item two.
Invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Got a little feedback. The invocation will be given by Dr. Greg Silverman from Desert Hope Lutheran Church. After the invocation, I ask that you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we give you praise and worship, for you are a loving God. We thank you for this great city and all of the wonderful leaders who give of their time and talents to help our community excel. We ask your forgiveness for the times when we have not been all that you have called us to be, and we ask by your grace that we would work together to be a blessing to our city and every single Tucson family. Help us, oh God, for we cannot realize true success as a community without your grace and protection. Blessed be thou, oh Lord our God. Hallelujah. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's get to work. There's one fun thing on this agenda. Is this on? Hello? Yeah, that works. Hello? All right. Uh, see a lot of new faces here tonight, probably not used to these chambers, so we have a little rituals that we do. May take, oh, I don't know, a couple hours. No, it won't take that long. Uh, first of all, I would like to proclaim September 2019 to be Falls Prevention Awareness Month. I believe Deborah Adams and Lee Itulie Classon of the Southern Chapter of the Arizona Falls Prevention Coalition are here to accept the proclamation. Are you here to accept the proclamation? There they are. Okay. Whereas falls are the leading cause of unintentional injury-related hospitalizations, emergency room visits, and deaths among Arizona residents 65 and older, with 974 deaths in 2017. And whereas last year, more than 14,300 older adults were hospitalized as a result of falls, and there were nearly 43,000 emergency department visits for fall-related injuries among those 65 and older. And whereas factors contributing to falls include decreased lower body strength, balance, and endurance, complications from ongoing health conditions, use of medications, changes in vision, and unsafe home and community conditions. And whereas falling is not an inevitable result of aging, and evidence-based health promotion programs reduce falls by utilizing cost-effective strategies such as regular physical exercise to increase strength, balance, and coordination, regular medication management, yearly vision and hearing checkups, modifications to home environments that reduce hazards such as slippery floors, poor lighting, and uneven services. And whereas the Southern Chapter of the Arizona Falls Prevention Coalition is working to increase awareness of this public health and safety issue during the annual observance of Falls Prevention Awareness Month, to promote strategies to prevent falls and encourage Southern Arizona residents to take steps to protect themselves and those who are at increased risk of falling. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan Rothschild, Mayor of the City of Tucson, do hereby proclaim September 2019 to be Falls Prevention Awareness Month in this community, and encourage all of our residents to reduce their risk of falling and promote health, safety, and independence through participation in evidence-based physical exercise, annual eye and hearing checkups, medication management, and home safety checks. Witness, I put my hand and seal this fourth day of September, Jonathan Rothschild, Mayor. I'd like to hand this to you and let you say a word or two. Uh, before you do that, probably should have said in advance, uh, everything's in there, but I think we've all had experience either with parents or with ourselves where, uh, as we get a little older, uh, we can, uh, live a little less longer, uh, if we don't really address the issue of falling. And I know we've all had parents who have fallen in a home and then the issues that occur thereafter. So this really is a serious issue, a serious education issue. If you'd like to say a few words?
I would like to thank you, Mayor, and council members, for helping the coalition really bring awareness, um, to this serious, um, part of what, um, happens with a lot of older adults and the, we're really trying to work with our community to educate everybody in regards to fall risk. And so in the month of September, October, and November, we're going to be having many community events inviting people to come and learn about fall risk and how they can address those risks. And it's interesting that, um, tonight we're sharing with all of our first responders, um, the room because, um, we've really been working as a coalition with many first responders in trying to break the cycle of falls. Sometimes an individual falls and they're taken to the hospital, they're discharged from home, a fall happens again. And it's how do we as a community, how do all of us that are working with older adults, um, working with our family members, help to recognize what needs to be changed in that home, or how that person needs to be working with their primary care physician to identify the medications that may be putting them at fall risk? So thank you for helping us bring awareness.
Thank you. You've got to do a great job, so give me a hand.
Thank you.
Because there is no end to trouble and turmoil in the world, um, I'd like to, uh, declare Hunger Action Month. We haven't gotten to the fun part yet. Um, so, and to, who is here to get the Hunger Action Month? There we go. Natalia Molina. Natalia Molina from the Community Food Bank. Community Food Bank is our principal distributor through the National Food Program of foodstuffs in...
Oh, okay. Now, that's important. Thank you.
Uh, the Community Food Bank is our principal distributor of foodstuffs in our community through the National Food Program, which, at least over the last few years, has been put in threat every year, uh, by the current administration. Uh, just to get a sense of it, we serve, Natalia could correct us, but I know we serve over 100,000, uh, families, 200,000 people. Natalia? Natalia? All right. Yes to both? Uh, a pretty significant amount, a pretty shocking and surprising amount. And, uh, they do a fantastic job for our community, so, uh, in honor of them and the efforts. Whereas Arizona has the fifth highest rate of childhood hunger in the United States, and one in four children and one in five adults are at risk for hunger. And whereas children from families struggling with hunger may be more likely to repeat a grade in elementary school, experience developmental impairments in areas such as language and motor skills, and have more social and behavioral problems. And whereas hunger in our community is often linked to poverty and the challenges of inadequate access to healthy food, lack of economic opportunity, social isolation, and serious diet-related diseases. And whereas the Community Food Bank of Southern Arizona serves nearly 200,000 people a year with emergency food assistance and works to address the root causes of hunger to build a healthy, hunger-free tomorrow. And whereas September 14th is the Community Food Bank of Southern Arizona's 10th Annual Hunger Walk, get out there for it, where together we can raise awareness of hunger in our community and take action toward our vision of a healthy, hunger-free future for Southern Arizona. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan Rothschild, Mayor of the City of Tucson, do hereby proclaim the month of September 19 to be Hunger Action Month in this community, and encourage all of our residents to take action toward a healthy, hunger-free future for Southern Arizona. Witness, I put my hand and seal this fourth day of September, Jonathan Rothschild, Mayor. I'd like to hand this to you and let you say a word or two. Uh, before you do that, probably should have said in advance, uh, everything's in there, but I think we've all had experience either with parents or with ourselves where, uh, as we get a little older, uh, we can, uh, live a little less longer, uh, if we don't really address the issue of falling. And I know we've all had parents who have fallen in a home and then the issues that occur thereafter. So this really is a serious issue, a serious education issue. If you'd like to say a few words?
I would like to thank you, Mayor, and council members, for helping the coalition really bring awareness, um, to this serious, um, part of what, um, happens with a lot of older adults and the, we're really trying to work with our community to educate everybody in regards to fall risk. And so in the month of September, October, and November, we're going to be having many community events inviting people to come and learn about fall risk and how they can address those risks. And it's interesting that, um, tonight we're sharing with all of our first responders, um, the room because, um, we've really been working as a coalition with many first responders in trying to break the cycle of falls. Sometimes an individual falls and they're taken to the hospital, they're discharged from home, a fall happens again. And it's how do we as a community, how do all of us that are working with older adults, um, working with our family members, help to recognize what needs to be changed in that home, or how that person needs to be working with their primary care physician to identify the medications that may be putting them at fall risk? So thank you for helping us bring awareness.
Thank you. You've got to do a great job, so give me a hand.
Thank you.
Because there is no end to trouble and turmoil in the world, um, I'd like to, uh, declare Hunger Action Month. We haven't gotten to the fun part yet. Um, so, and to, who is here to get the Hunger Action Month? There we go. Natalia Molina. Natalia Molina from the Community Food Bank. Community Food Bank is our principal distributor through the National Food Program of foodstuffs in...
Oh, okay. Now, that's important. Thank you.
Uh, the Community Food Bank is our principal distributor of foodstuffs in our community through the National Food Program, which, at least over the last few years, has been put in threat every year, uh, by the current administration. Uh, just to get a sense of it, we serve, Natalia could correct us, but I know we serve over 100,000, uh, families, 200,000 people. Natalia? Natalia? All right. Yes to both? Uh, a pretty significant amount, a pretty shocking and surprising amount. And, uh, they do a fantastic job for our community, so, uh, in honor of them and the efforts. Whereas Arizona has the fifth highest rate of childhood hunger in the United States, and one in four children and one in five adults are at risk for hunger. And whereas children from families struggling with hunger may be more likely to repeat a grade in elementary school, experience developmental impairments in areas such as language and motor skills, and have more social and behavioral problems. And whereas hunger in our community is often linked to poverty and the challenges of inadequate access to healthy food, lack of economic opportunity, social isolation, and serious diet-related diseases. And whereas the Community Food Bank of Southern Arizona serves nearly 200,000 people a year with emergency food assistance and works to address the root causes of hunger to build a healthy, hunger-free tomorrow. And whereas September 14th is the Community Food Bank of Southern Arizona's 10th Annual Hunger Walk, get out there for it, where together we can raise awareness of hunger in our community and take action toward our vision of a healthy, hunger-free future for Southern Arizona. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan Rothschild, Mayor of the City of Tucson, do hereby proclaim the month of September 19 to be Hunger Action Month in this community, and encourage all of our residents to take action toward a healthy, hunger-free future for Southern Arizona. Witness, I put my hand and seal this fourth day of September, 2019. I'm sure you already do a lot. It's a really simple thing to do. Get a box, put your, uh, non-perishables in it, get it down to the food bank, get it down to one of their sites, and, or even go down there and see the nature of the work that's done, which is, which is pretty incredible. So, uh, with that, I'd like to give you this. Natalia, if you'd like to say a word?
I would just like to say thank you very much to the Mayor. Thank you very much to the City of Tucson for all of your continued support to the Community Food Bank of Southern Arizona. One in four adults, one in three children suffers from hunger in our great state. We can do better than this. Please join us on Saturday, September 14th, for our 10th Annual Hunger Walk. And as the Mayor stated, you too can make a great difference in the lives of those suffering from hunger by just coming on down, volunteering, or gathering some food for us. So thank you again for your support, and thank you again for this wonderful proclamation. We appreciate it.
Okay. Now for the, what's going to be the most fun part of the evening, I am convinced. Councilmember Fimbres? Oh, look at that, right on, right on schedule. Ah, what do we got here? Well, we'll see what we got. So I don't know if you guys are watching ESPN the other week. That's what I watched to get away from this. And, uh, we, yeah, there you go. And I can see the rest of these people are too intellectual for that, but that's okay. Uh, we, uh, had a Little League team, Sunnyside Little League, which has been great. They're softball girls, uh, either took second or won the national championship. Here they come. I don't know what I got. I don't know what I got. I don't know what I got. Okay. So, there's, I know, and I dropped them. Um, so there's one little guy I know I want to meet. Who's the guy that got the game-winning hit in this? Was that the little guy right there? So I'm going to say, I was watching the game. It was a tough game. You were one of the pitchers, right? Yeah, I remember you. And, and you look like a pitcher. Anyway, I don't know, you have to use everybody, right? So, uh, they get, they're down to like the last inning, and all they've got left is this little guy, okay? It's like, oh, God, this game's over, you know?
Whereas falls are the leading cause of unintentional injury-related hospitalizations, emergency room visits, and deaths among Arizona residents 65 and older, with 974 deaths in 2017. And whereas last year more than 14,300 older adults were hospitalized as a result of falls, and there were nearly 43,000 emergency department visits for fall-related injuries among those 65 and older. And whereas factors contributing to falls include decreased lower body strength, balance and endurance, complications from ongoing health conditions, use of medications, changes in vision, and unsafe home and community conditions. And whereas falling is not an inevitable result of aging, and evidence-based health promotion programs reduce falls by utilizing cost-effective strategies such as regular physical exercise to increase strength, balance and coordination, regular medication management, yearly vision and hearing checkups, modifications to home environments that reduce hazards such as slippery floors, poor lighting, and uneven surfaces. And whereas the Southern Chapter of the Arizona Falls Prevention Coalition is working to increase awareness of this public health and safety issue during the annual observance of Falls Prevention Awareness Month, to promote strategies to prevent falls and encourage Southern Arizona residents to take steps to protect themselves and those who are at increased risk of falling. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan Rothschild, Mayor of the City of Tucson, do hereby proclaim September 2019 to be Falls Prevention Awareness Month in this community, and encourage all of our residents to reduce their risk of falling and promote health, safety, and independence through participation in evidence-based physical exercise, annual eye and hearing checkups, medication management, and home safety checks. Witness, I put my hand and seal this fourth day of September, Jonathan Rothschild, Mayor. I'd like to hand this to you and let you say a word or two. Before you do that, probably should have said in advance, everything's in there, but I think we've all had experience either with parents or with ourselves where, as we get a little older, we can live a little less longer if we don't really address the issue of falling. And I know we've all had parents who have fallen in a home and then the issues that occur thereafter. So this really is a serious issue, a serious education issue. If you'd like to say a few words?
I would like to thank you, Mayor, and council members for helping the coalition really bring awareness to this serious part of what happens with a lot of older adults. And we're really trying to work with our community to educate everybody in regards to fall risk. And so in the month of September, October, and November, we're going to be having many community events inviting people to come and learn about fall risk and how they can address those risks. And it's interesting that tonight we're sharing with all of our first responders the room because we've really been working as a coalition with many first responders in trying to break the cycle of falls. Sometimes an individual falls and they're taken to the hospital, they're discharged from home, a fall happens again. And it's how do we as a community, how do all of us that are working with older adults, working with our family members, help to recognize what needs to be changed in that home, or how that person needs to be working with their primary care physician to identify the medications that may be putting them at fall risk? So thank you for helping us bring awareness.
Thank you. You've got to do a great job, so give a hand.
Thank you.
Because there is no end to trouble and turmoil in the world, I'd like to declare Hunger Action Month. We haven't gotten to the fun part yet. So, and to, who is here to get the Hunger Action Month? There we go. Natalia Molina. Natalia Molina from the Community Food Bank. Community Food Bank is our principal distributor through the National Food Program of foodstuffs. Oh, okay. No, that's important. Thank you. The Community Food Bank is our principal distributor of foodstuffs in our community through the National Food Program, which, at least over the last few years, has been put in threat every year by the current administration. Just to get a sense of it, we serve, Natalia could correct us, but I know we serve over 100,000 families, 200,000 people. Natalia, Natalia?
Yes.
All right. Yes to both? A pretty significant amount, a pretty shocking and surprising amount. And they do a fantastic job for our community, so in honor of them and the efforts. Whereas Arizona has the fifth-highest rate of childhood hunger in the United States, and one in four children and one in five adults are at risk for hunger. And whereas children from families struggling with hunger may be more likely to repeat a grade in elementary school, experience developmental impairments in areas such as language and motor skills, and have more social and behavioral problems. And whereas hunger in our community is often linked to poverty and the challenges of inadequate access to healthy food, lack of economic opportunity, social isolation, and serious diet-related diseases. And whereas the Community Food Bank of Southern Arizona serves nearly 200,000 people a year with emergency food assistance and works to address the root causes of hunger to build a healthy, hunger-free tomorrow. And whereas September 14th is the Community Food Bank of Southern Arizona's 10th Annual Hunger Walk, get out there for it, where together we can raise awareness of hunger in our community and take action toward our vision of a healthy, hunger-free future for Southern Arizona. Now, therefore, I, Jonathan Rothschild, Mayor of the City of Tucson, do hereby proclaim the month of September 19 to be Hunger Action Month. And this community encourages all of our residents to take action toward a healthy, hunger-free future for Southern Arizona. Witness, I put my hand and seal this fourth day of September 2019. I'm sure you already do a lot. It's a really simple thing to do. Get a box, put your non-perishables in it, get it down to the food bank, get it down to one of their sites, and, or even go down there and see the nature of the work that's done, which is, which is pretty incredible. So with that, I'd like to give you this. Natalia, if you'd like to say a word.
I would just like to say thank you very much to the mayor. Thank you very much to the City of Tucson for all of your continued support to the Community Food Bank of Southern Arizona. One in four adults, one in three children suffers from hunger in our great state. We can do better than this. Please join us on Saturday, September 14th, for our 10th Annual Hunger Walk. And as the mayor stated, you too can make a great difference in the lives of those suffering from hunger by just coming on down, volunteering, or gathering some food for us. So thank you again for your support, and thank you again for this wonderful proclamation. We appreciate it.
Okay, now for the, what's going to be the most fun part of the evening, I am convinced. Councilmember Fimbros, oh, look at that, right on, right on schedule. Ah, what do we got here? Well, we'll see what we got. So I don't know if you guys were watching ESPN the other week. That's what I watched to get away from this. And we, yeah, there you go. And I can see the rest of these people are too intellectual for that, but that's okay. We had a Little League team, Sunnyside Little League, which has been great. They're softball girls, either took second or won the national championship. Here they come. I don't know what I got. I don't know what I got. Okay, so there's, I know, and I dropped him. So there's one little guy I know I want to meet. Who's the guy that got the game-winning hit in the, was that the little guy right there? So I'm going to say, I was watching the game. It was a tough game. You were one of the pitchers, right? Yeah, I remember you. And, and you look like a pitcher. Anyway, I don't know, you have to use everybody, right? So they get, they're down to like the last inning, and all they've got left is this little guy, okay? It's like, oh, God, this game's over, you know? And he gets up there and he drills a ball right between, it was between centerfield and right field, right? And these little guys scatter around and they win the game and they go to the finals. And they lost in the finals, the United States, the Western Finals, but the team that won, Hawaii, came within one win of playing for the world championships. So these guys are literally that good. And me and Fimbros want their agent contracts, but we'll discuss that later.
So, as tradition has been with us, with the mayor and council, under Jonathan Rothschild, we want to recognize outstanding student athletes who've done, recognized our city and brought it up to the forefront in the country. And we want to recognize their managers and their coaches. So your coaches and managers, please come on up. And the mayor, about three weeks ago, I presented them with a medallion of hope for the players, but we had the mayor's certificate of appreciation and my certificate. And the first one is to manager Francisco Rivera, of the 2019 Arizona Little League Champions.
Okay.
And councilman, Coach Cristobal Loretta Senior. Where's that? Coach Ernest Moroka. Ah, Moraga. Carla Lopez Moraga. Where's Carla? Caesar, come on up here, Mita. Okay, now we got the players. Juan Abril. Now we start with the players. Juan Abril. All right, Juan. Angel Armenta Junior. Where's Angel? All right. Asad Golin. What did I say? Asad. Yes, yes. All right. Everybody turn around, we're getting the picture. Juan Hernandez. Cristobal Damian Dorata. Is that here? Jordan Maboka. Where's Jordan? Ah, Jordan. Isaiah. All right, Isaiah. Michelle Muniz. Where's Michelle? Antonio Choa. Where's Antonio? Not here? Francisco Rivera. Oh, Francisco Junior. Andrew Romo. Where's Andrew? Congratulations, Mito. Miguel Siqueiros. And Jorge Sasueta. All right. Everybody get in front here, they take a picture with the coach, right here.
Come back over here. There you go.
We're very proud of you guys.
To the parents, by the way.
Exactly. Give them a round of applause. And not only do they have to do well on the field, but they have to do well in school also. And that's another reason I need a round of applause.
These guys are straight. Richard. These guys, this guy, Muniz.
And this guy, Rivera, straight A's.
I know. Straight A's. All right, everybody look at the camera.
Come on, you guys should be used to this by now.
All right, Sunnyside. I look forward to seeing you in the pros, right? I look forward to seeing you guys in the pros, right? Keep your grades up, Mito. Keep your grades up. Keep your grades up. All right. Thank you so much.
Sunny side on three. One, two, three, sunny side.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions.
City manager's communication number 274 dated September 4. This received into and made part of the record may have a motion to approve the appointments in the report.
So moved.
Got a motion, second to approve the appointment of Carol Clement to the Design Review Board. Important board, Design Review Board. And Janet Fisher to the Public Arts and Community Design Community, also important. We've got a motion, second. Are Ms. Clement or Ms. Fisher present tonight? Probably not. I just want to thank them in absentia for doing this. This is work they do without any pay, and they really do help us, for instance, on a design review board matter, something that might concern you at some point in the future. These are the folks that really do give us the input we need to understand what works and what doesn't. So I want to thank them. Okay, all those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Are there any personal appointments made at this time? All right, hearing none. Let's move to item three.
Mayor and council report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 272 dated September 4. Received into and made part of the record. This time it's been scheduled to allow members of the mayor and council to report on current events. Does any council member have anything to report at this time? Councilmember Romero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite the community to join the Ward 1 council office and the Ward 5 council office to learn more about the Liberty Avenue Bicycle Boulevard project. This project is designed for, to safely connect families and residents walking and biking to school and other destinations in the South Side area. We look forward to getting your feedback on this project. This is a family event, so please bring kids for a bike rodeo courtesy of the Pima County Bicycle and Pedestrian Program. This is a neighborhood ice cream social to inform the community and the communities that abut Liberty Bicycle, Liberty Avenue Bicycle Boulevard. Kids are encouraged, again, to bring their bikes. No bike, no problem. Pima County will have bikes and helmets for kids ages seven to 10. What it is, is a neighborhood ice cream social to inform the community about the Liberty Avenue Bicycle Boulevard. It's going to take place this Saturday, September 7th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Apollo Middle School located at 265 West Nebraska Street. For questions or special accommodations, please contact Fernanda Quintanilla at 837-6106.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Your Honor, it's with great regret that I inform us that today, this morning, we had a police officer off duty, an active police officer, Sergeant Timothy Frobe, lost his life early this morning in a, in an accident not related to his service, but it's still, we lost one of our own today. Sergeant Frobe served his country for 34 years, in both the Marine Corps and 24 years as a Tucson police officer. He is survived by his wife and four children. Many family members, friends, and colleagues mourn his death. The Tucson Police Extend, the Tucson Police Department and the City of Tucson expense its deepest condolences to Sergeant Frobe's family and friends. He was loved and respected by so many. He served on the honor guard. He served at different community events. So I've asked that we observe about one minute of silence.
Mr. Ortega, can you assure that we all are given information about any memorial services or anything we can do to help with the family?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, anybody else? Councilmember Scott.
Recently, at the Arizona League of Cities and Towns, the mayor received an award for his years of service for the City of Tucson and for serving our community so very well. So congratulations to the mayor for a good reward.
Anybody else want anything?
I also want to congratulate Vice Mayor Shirley Scott for also being recognized there for her 24 years of service. She deserves her other applause. First, all the ladies.
To put that in perspective, I was honored for eight years of service. Councilmember Scott was honored for 24 years of service. And I think we had a matter on the table here this afternoon, and Councilmember Scott said, "That ordinance was passed even before I got here." And I said, "I didn't know that any ordinance had ever passed before you got here." So she has done a wonderful job for this community for 24 years. That's, I mean, think about that. So Councilmember Scott, thank you very much, and we all respect and honor you so much. All right, if that's it.
No, I have, I have, I have 55 items.
Okay, that's good.
On Wednesday, the 28th of August, the grand opening of the ribbon cutting of the PSMA Medical Aid Warehouse located at 720 East 46th Street was opened. The mission of the warehouse is to improve the quality of life of adults and children by providing medical supplies and equipment both locally and internationally. I wanted to thank Jose Rals, Aris, Yassano, Verlin, Jose, Enrique Zerna, Kathy Olson, Dr. John Arnold, and Gail Topolinski, who worked really hard to make this a reality. And they're going to provide, it's a medical warehouse for, for they're going to be able to apply supplies, supplies for the most innocent, most vulnerable citizens. Also on Saturday, August 31st, the ribbon cutting was held for the Break Max at 1617 East Tucson Marketplace Drive at the Bridges in Ward 5. I want to thank the managers and staff who made this a, a, a great event. And it was done, this building was put up in four months, and it was $1.7 million project. And I want to thank them for helping. I want to thank Cindy Ayala from Pueblo Gardens for helping make this, who sits on the Design Review Board, for being there. And the Renaissance of the Ward 5 continue in that area. And Monday, most people attended the Tucson Labor Day picnic, which took place at Reed Park. I want to congratulate all the unions and organizations that have helped participate and make this another successfully grant. The United States Air Force is seeking public comment on a plan to clean up the content, contentments of concerns on the groundwater of the Southern Arizona half of the Tucson International Airport Superfund Site area in the plume. The command period runs through September 30th. A copy of the plan is at the Valencia Public Library, which is at 202 West Valencia Road, and it's online at AFCECPublicAdminRecordUSAForce mail search ASPX. Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's move on to item four.
City manager's report summary of current events.
City manager's communication number 273 dated September 4. Received into and made part of the record. This time it's been scheduled to allow the city manager to report on current events.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, at your request, you now have refillable water bottles in front of you. We'll no longer use sour foam cups. Just wanted to point out those came from Tucson Water, and so we will continue to use those. So no other report, Mr. Mayor, that's all.
Okay, let's go to item five.
Your Honor, before we leave item four, I would like to make an announcement. This Friday, Deborah Rainon, the chief deputy city clerk, will be retiring from the city. She's put in 33 years of service. Deborah's been an integral part of the city clerk's office and the city as well. Her dedication to the citizens of Tucson, her integrity should really serve as a model to all city employees to follow. And I just want to wish her the best during the next chapter of her life.
Was she the one that always made you give the right answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure about that. Okay, now we can go to item five.
Liquor license applications, report from city manager.
City manager's communication number 275 dated September 4. Received into and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, please read the liquor license agenda.
Your Honor, this evening's liquor license agenda, under item 5B, we have seven requests for new license, three requests for personal location transfer. Under item 5C, we have 14 requests for special events. Staff has indicated that all the applicants are in compliance with city requirements. However, Councilmember Kazachik will declare conflict of interest on items 5B 5 and 7, and C 2 through 4. So an appropriate motion would be to forward items 5B 1 through 4, 6, and C 1, and 5 through 14 to the State Liquor Board with a recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Second. We've got a motion, a second. All in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That passes. Do we need the second motion for the recusal?
Second motion would be to approve items 5B 5 and 5B 7, and C 2 through 4.
So moved.
Second. A motion on that will indicate Councilmember Kazachik's recusal. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? That motion passes 6-0. All right, let's move on to item six.
Call to the audience.
Okay, got, get through this tonight. Got about six or seven cards. We will start with, well, I guess we ought to read the instruction, huh? At this time, any member of the public is allowed to address the mayor and council on any issue except for items scheduled for a public hearing on this matter. Please make sure you've read the information on the back of speakers' card before making your presentation. Speakers are limited to three-minute presentations here. Call the audience is scheduled to last for 30 minutes. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, individual council members may ask the city manager to review a matter, ask it to be placed on a future agenda, or respond to criticism made by speakers. However, the mayor and council may not discuss or take legal action on matters raised during call the audience. We do have a few cards here. I think we get through them all within time. We will start with Kin Scoville.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, is this working? Can everybody hear me?
That one should work, yeah.
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Ken Scoville, as you asked. And I'm a retired teacher, and I thought this would be an appropriate time, since I'm here on some other issues, to sort of tell you something. On September 17th, 1787, the delegates to the Constitutional Convention met for the last time to sign the document they had created. That was the U.S. Constitution. Every September 17th, classrooms and organizations around the country celebrate our Constitution. And it's a form of government, that I don't, I know more, that established a representative democracy, a republic, and we vote for our fellow citizens to represent us, and their charge is to represent all the people. And I think it's always good to try and remember that in lots of difficult situations. The Constitution is considered one of the charters of freedom, and that includes the Declaration of Independence and the Bill of Rights. They're on display every day at the, at the National Archives in the Rotunda of Freedom. And so I, I would encourage anybody with students or something, use Google Earth and see the National Archives, and then link to the National Park Service site in the archives, and you can actually see where you go in to see the free documents. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken. James Waddell? Is there a James Waddell here? Okay, come on up.
Good evening, everybody. Yeah, I wanted to talk about a dissertation that I want to speak about and an argument that I want to address. When we had marriage, two people together, you know, have a commitment, they go through the thick and thin, they have to constantly address situations, raise a family. Right now, they can't. They don't, they can't afford enough money to pay for their lunch at, at school. So, you know, I want to bridge the divide, okay? My construct for marriage, you know, that everybody should have the understanding that from that, either Democrat or Republicans, okay, they all have children, they all want from that, either Democrat or Republicans, okay, they all have children, they all want to grow up and be successful, and have a house, a home, and a good job, okay? We don't have that, okay? In the, if we make the construct of marriage between Republicans and Democrats, okay, we could bridge the divide. We have huge divide, okay? And the thing is, fighting doesn't solve anything, okay? If you want to fight, you can either win or you lose, okay? But in the end, you're going to be defeated, you know? Luckily, you know, for me, I've had my last breath taken, but I still live on, okay? So with that in mind, I mean, it's imperative that we, you know, embrace the commitment between two people, Democrat, Republican, and move forward, you know, and raise wages, be able to raise your children to be successful, okay? And it's not being done, okay? If you wanted to get back to me, I have a formula to create 20% more for everybody, okay? If you want, I'll get, I'll discuss that. But my argument that I have right now is, you know, the crisis, okay? There's a crisis of, there's an epidemic, okay? A thousand people are dying from overdose, okay? All that money they buy for drugs goes across the border, billions of dollars, okay? When it comes down to it, you have to, you have to legalize drugs completely, okay? People won't die because, you know, they don't know what's safe.
Okay, James, your time's up, so if you can wrap it up for us.
Okay, yeah.
Quickly.
You know, it's imperative, you know, to save people's lives, stop the money flowing over the border, and, you know, make a prescription for people who are documented drug users to get their drugs for free, okay? Then that 20 or 30 dollars that they spend on that, their drugs, could be food put on the table, okay? You know, you would cut crime in half.
Okay, sir, I need you to take off. Thanks. All right. Next one, Carabissel.
My name is Carabissel. I live in Ward 4. Thank you for this opportunity, Mr. Mayor, council members, audience, and the TV viewers of Tucson Channel 12. A small political party such as the Green Party must start somewhere. We have a peace movement. For me, it's a peace movement nonviolently. This peace ball represents that for me. As a candidate for Ward 4, city councilman, you, the citizens of Ward 4 of Tucson, will have the opportunity, as well as Tucson in general, to vote for me this next month. Why should all Democrats, Republicans, Libertarians, as well as independents, vote for me? After all, I am the Green Party candidate for Ward 4. Well, the answer is I will work for you full-time to make Tucson an even better city. Okay, all candidates can and do say this. What is different is, one, passing this historic sanctuary proposition 205 for all of Tucson will provide safety for, A, undocumented people who have been in Tucson as good citizens according to the meaning of the law; B, put yourself with your family fleeing your country because of literal persecution. Most voters believe in doing to others as you would have them do unto you. C, ICE and Border Patrol forces need reduction. You need reduction. We see TV and newspaper articles of ICE and Border Patrol forces being inhumane, children separated from parents, some detainees have been beaten and mistreated and treated as animals. D, we as Tucsonians are, I believe, ready to be ethical, moral people regardless of political party. Two, the Green Party's grassroots democracy starts here locally. A, our elected congressional officials at state and federal levels have not sought enough nonviolent solutions to society's problems, from gun control to social issues. B, the same, have not sought enough nonviolent solutions for international perpetual war. I will earn your vote. As a retired high school teacher from New York City, I have coordinating skills and a work ethic way beyond the 40 hours per week. I know that Shirley Scott can identify that. I'm thankful that you're not running. There's no way I would beat you.
All right, thank you, Carol.
Thank you for your vote for Ward 4, city councilman. You are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen, any more?
First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for the opportunity to say a few words, and I would be grateful if you'd let me know when I have about 30 seconds left.
I think a light pops up, doesn't it?
The green one turns to red or something?
Turns yellow.
Yellow, thank you. So anyhow, before I begin, I want to thank the city clerk's office. They've assisted me greatly, and they provide such excellent service. So I want to thank them for that. Since we have a new fire chief, I would like to thank him and the firefighters for the great job they do. I get the pictures that are sent out of the fires and the, and see what they do, and it's just amazing. But most of all, I'd like to thank the police officers for the great job that they do. It is extremely hard to be a police officer in today's environment. I have an opportunity once in a while to sit in with the Citizens Police Advisory Review Board and listen to the, what the Citizens Police Advisory Review Board does is they review citizens' complaints on a random basis after the Office of Professional Standards has already reviewed these cases. And sometimes, the complaints that the citizens file are just so minor, it's incredible that somebody would actually take the time to complain about the things that they do. Sometimes, the complaints are very valid, and as far as lack of service complaints, as far as rudeness complaints are concerned, the Office of Professional Standards does an excellent job. Now, I think what happens is when the risk gets higher, when there's more involved, when there's excessive use of force, on up to the loss of life, then that's where things start to get a little more questionable. I prepared a handout that I'm not going to go over due to lack of time, and hopefully that'll find its way to the council members tomorrow, if not, if it hasn't already. But essentially, there was a helicopter and a motorcycle. The motorcycle was fleeing from police, going about 80 miles an hour down Swan Road. The helicopter was broadcasting the location of the motorcyclist. A police officer decided that he would pull in front of the motorcyclist, and the question, of course, is, was he doing a roadblock, which prohibited use of force, or was the officer doing a U-turn? The board that investigated this report is not OPS, it's called the Critical Incident Review Board. And basically, that board consisted of 12 voting members, seven of them who were police officers. It was chaired by the deputy chief. It had five, it's still green, it had five, five non-police members on the board, three of them were county attorneys, and then there were two others. So as far as reflecting the citizens' view or the families' view, I just don't think that gets done. What I would like to do is, since we have already in Tucson established this Citizens Police Advisory Review Board, I would like to have them look at this case just for the purposes of determining whether or not the case was investigated fairly and thoroughly. CPAR is not to pass, you know, they're not to speak on discipline issues. They're...
I got it.
30 seconds.
I think I got it. Mr. Rankin, can you advise the constituent as to what remedy there may be, either through CPAR or any other review board?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In fact, I can get his information and get with him and go through the entire CPAR board, and it's in the scope of their authority.
Yeah. So, you know, I appreciate you coming in and indicating this conversation, and Mr. Rankin can kind of guide you through what the next process would be, if that's okay.
Yes and no. But I do want to say, though, I mean, it puts the police in a terrible situation when you're a member of the police and you're judging your fellow officer, and your fellow officer made a bonehead mistake, you know? When I make a mistake, nobody dies, okay? I'm an accountant. I can have your raise, I can fix my mistakes. I'm not under the same kind of stress and pressure that police officers are under.
Just cost money.
Something bad happens when they're not thinking.
All right.
It's, but, but then you have the family to think about, too, you know, the family. Thank you.
All right. No, all right. Okay, we have another Green Party member here, apparently, William Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, members of the city, of the city council. My name's William Peterson. I'm a proud Green Party member, and I'm running for Ward 2, city council, and I'll acknowledge my opponent, which is Paul Cunningham. And there's a Republican in there in the mix, and I forgot his name already, so. But the bottom line about it is, is I have no idea how to run this campaign. I don't. I don't have a clue. But I'm going to learn. And the one thing I'm going to do is get out to my constituents in my ward and find out what are their concerns, what are their problems, and I'm going to sit down and I'm going to listen to them. And hopefully, after a few minutes, they're going to trust me. Trust integrity is missing in the electoral process now. So there it is. But what I want to talk about on the Green Party is this. Prop 205, Sanctuary City Movement. Our Green Party candidates, Mike Sees for mayor and Kerr for Ward 4, me for Ward 2, we support Sanctuary City. It's a movement that has to be happening in Tucson, because our immigrant population, especially on the south side of Tucson, Latinos and so on, are being racially profiled. We got ICE in hospitals. We have ICE in schools. We have ICE in bus stations, and we have the Sheriff's Department pulling over victims for minor traffic violations and then contacting ICE. And there, some of these people are getting deported, which is absolutely wrong. So I want to say, we've got to push for 205 in November. Please consider this. It's important. And I'm not saying this as a Green Party member, I'm saying as a citizen of Tucson, respect our immigrant community, respect their rights, and make City Tucson a safe city for them to come to. Thank you.
James Tickner here?
Testing. Hello. First, before I begin, I want to congratulate Ms. Romero on her victory in the Democratic nomination for the office of mayor. Hello, council. My name is James Tickner. I am a new resident to the city of Tucson. I come before you today to submit a request to you. I had received a violation about one week ago for referencing the city ordinance on use of a mobile device while driving. Go figure, I'm using a mobile device right now. And my complaint is that regards to my specific case under Arizona law, the new bill that was passed, what I did was perfectly legal, given the circumstances, but not within the city ordinance as it's currently written. My request to you is that I believe that this ordinance should be updated to mirror the state law or repealed, and the officers enforcing this standard cite the state law whenever they are issuing the citations, because the two are not synonymous with each other. As it's currently written, I believe that the ordinance is no longer even within the boundaries of the city charter. Specifically, under Chapter 4 of the Tucson City Charter, Section 1, Paragraph 2, it states that the enumerated power of the council is to make and pass all ordinance's resolutions and orders not repugnant to the Constitution of the United States or the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona. I believe that this violation of ordinance that I received is in conflict here with the Arizona law recently passed regarding cell phone use while driving. The approved House Bill 2318, now law 28-914, Section 2B, Subsection 1 and 2, states that a person is guilty if they quote, "write, send, or read any text-based communication, including text message, instant message, email, or internet data on a portable wireless communication device or standalone electronic device." This paragraph does not apply to the following: the use of a portable wireless communication device or standalone device when used in a hands-free manner for navigation of a motor vehicle and use of a global positioning system. At this time, ladies and gentlemen of the council, that is, I would like to indicate that's exactly what I was doing. I was on a delivery for a third-party service app called DoorDash to provide a service to the community, of which there are many others in the community that use this service. And this acts as a central hold hub for the assignment, pickup, and delivery of orders using GPS navigation system software. And under, again, I would like to reiterate that under the Arizona law that passed, I am viewed as a law-abiding citizen, but under the ordinance, I am viewed as a offender. So in summary, I urge the council to consider either repealing the ordinance or the modification of the ordinance to mirror the state law. Thank you. And if the council has any questions, I would be happy to answer those or provide an email containing this narrative with the specific sections that I referenced.
Mr. Rankin, would you like to explain to the constituent what happened with the local ordinances versus state ordinance?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I am happy to follow up with the speaker and provide the information that when the Arizona Legislature passed the bill establishing the state law, they expressly left in place the authority of the local jurisdictions who had already adopted measures covering distracted driving, that those provisions, local provisions, would stay in place for a period of time. So we are still consistent with the state law.
Okay. May I ask a point of clarification on that?
I think it'd be best if I just get with him and take it through.
Yeah, get with the attorney.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Nice, nice try. Okay, let's go to item eight. Item seven. You're right. Seven.
Consent agenda, items A through P.
Reading reports from the city manager on the consent agenda are received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read the consent agenda.
Your Honor, on this evening's consent agenda, item A is city administration approving the appointment of Charles W. Ryan III as fire chief of the city of Tucson, and the appointment of Liz Morales as the Housing and Community Development Director, Department Director. This item will be considered separately through request of the city manager. Item B is transportation certification acceptance agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation for Federal Highway Administration funds. Item C is transportation, approving the city of Tucson Transit Services Title VI program for submission to the Federal Transit Administration. Item D is an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation Authority of Pima County for the provision of fixed route transit services for designated areas of Pima County, the town of Morena, and the city of South Tucson. Item E is an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Transportation Authority of Pima County for regional transit service improvements for fiscal year 2020. Item F is an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for the Silver Railroad, Iron Road to Grant Road Improvement Project. This item is continued from the meeting of August 6, 2019. Item J is real property vacation and sale of surplus alley right-of-way south of Speedway Boulevard between Park and Tindal Avenues. Item H is real property approving a lease agreement with Marcella Davila Barley and Sandra Davila DBA, the little one, for city-owned space at 149 through 151 North Stone Avenue. Item I is Tucson code-amending Chapter 20 Motor Vehicles and Traffic relating to speed limits on Inklum Road, repealing ordinances 11527 and 11528. Item J is an agreement with Aqua Capital Management LP for a Type II non-irrigation grandfathered groundwater right. Item K is a final plat S 19010 La Estancia de Tucson Block E lots 1 through 105 and common areas A through I. Item L is a final plat S 18075 Renee Mae Homes lots 1 through 8 and common areas A and B. Item M is an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County for the Pima County Safety and Justice Challenge Grant-funded data analyst. Item N is an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Healthcare Cost Containment System Administration for federal matching funds for graduate medical education at Tucson Medical Center. Item O is elections. It's an intergovernmental agreement with Pima County to provide election-related services for the 2019 city of Tucson. services for the 2019 City of Tucson general election. Item P is Industrial Development Authority authorization for the issuance of lease revenue refunding bonds tax-exempt Series 2019A and lease revenue bonds taxable Series 2019B. That's the extent of the consent agenda, Your Honor.
Okay, may a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the matters on the consent agenda, which is B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P.
That's excellent, that's excellent. That's third-grade education comes in handy. All right, we've got a motion to approve the all items on the consent agenda with the exception of item A, which we'll take separately. We got a motion in second, let's go to roll call.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Items on that portion of the consent agenda are approved by a vote of 7-0. Mr. Ortega, I think you pulled item A.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. Wanted to let you know Elizabeth Morales is not here this evening, she's our new housing director, that's part of this agenda item, but I did want to introduce her, we'll do that at a future meeting. Before I introduce our new fire chief, I did want to take a privilege of the microphone and thank Joe Galata for his service over the last 18 months. Joe, thank you, I know it was a tough, tough road to hoe, really appreciate your service, so thank you, Joe.
With that, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to just introduce Chuck Ryan. He's our new fire chief, will be starting September 30. He is coming to us from Fairfax County, and we're very excited. He went through a pretty exhaustive process where a lot of you actually met and were able to interview him as well, and I'm very pleased to introduce to you Mr. Charles Ryan III.
Mr. Ryan, would you like to say a few words?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor.
It's on.
Very good. Good evening, thank you for having me. It's an honor and a privilege to have been selected as the 28th Fire Chief for the City of Tucson. I can't express the excitement that both my wife and I have to become residents of the city, very much looking forward to making the move from Virginia, and excited for September 30th to be here, and very pleased and humbled to see members of command staff, as well as some of the men and women on the front lines of the Tucson Fire Department here tonight. So I appreciate their support before I even arrived. Everything has been a very warm welcome, and I'm really looking forward to getting started. Thank you so much.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, with that, I would recommend that the council approve the item A on the consent calendar.
Your Honor?
Yep.
Your Honor, I just wanted to let the people know as we welcome Chief Ryan, first of all, Chief Galata, thank you so much. I know you're not, I know you're gonna be around for a little bit longer, so I want you to know, I look forward to us continuing our relationship. To Chief Ryan, for everyone who doesn't know, Chief Ryan is actually one of the superstars of fire service around the United States. He's an instructor at the National Fire Academy, he holds a JD from Pepperdine Law, in other words, he's a law school graduate from Pepperdine University. He's one of, I think, one of the most unique fire chiefs in the country, and he comes to, we're lucky to have someone like him as our fire chief. So with that, I move the item for both appointments, and welcome Chief Ryan to City of Tucson.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Any other comment?
Mr. Mayor, just before there's a vote, I just need to let you know that in connection with the chief's appointment, and he has an employment services agreement, and I just learned that we may need to correct a description of the city's 401 deferred comp plan. We would just do that administratively, it would not be a substantive change, but we wouldn't need to bring it back to the mayor and council.
Great. All right, we got a motion in second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, we could've done roll call, but aye's good enough. Mr. Ortega, are you gonna get in one of those uniforms that the rest of the fire guys wear?
Mr. Mayor, his fan club that's with him has already taken him down and gotten a measure today, and so when he comes back, he'll be in full uniform.
Excellent, all right. Thank you, Mr. Ryan, for being here, we really look forward to your work here, thank you. All right, let's move on to item eight.
Public hearing amending the Unified Development Code Administrative Manual relating to establishment of planned community development zone fees, report from city manager, hearing, ordinance number 11681.
City manager's communication number 294, date September 4, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on a proposed amendment to the Unified Development Code Administrative Manual to establish planned community development zone rezoning application fees and PCD amendment fees. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour, speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Please come forward when I call your name, make your presentation, state your name, whether you're not, you live in the city, whom you're representing, whether or not you're paid speaker. Do we have any cards on this one, Roger?
No, Your Honor.
Okay, so, first of all, let me get a motion to close the public hearing. A motion saying to close the public hearing, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all right. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read ordinance 11681 by number and title only.
Ordinance number 11681 relating to planning and zoning, establishing and adopting fees to rezone a planned community development zone, and fees to amend a PCD, amending the administrative manual as supplement to the Tucson Code, Chapter 23B, United Develop, Unified Development Code at Sections 4-01.7.1.1A, and adding new subsections 4-01.7.3.1.1.2 and 1.3, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we pass and adopt ordinance 11681.
Got a motion in second, any discussion on this matter?
Question.
Yeah, sure, counsel.
For clarification, I understand all we're doing tonight is approving the fees, the fee structure, but our material says that the State Land Department is submitting a planned community development document for preliminary review. Is that a actual project that's in the works that, you know, that we ought to be also seeing? I just don't want to get hit with a Sierra Vista 28,000 homes kind of a planned community development that, you know, that we have been blindsided by.
Honorable Mayor and council, the
It's on.
State lands is currently working on their planned community development application. You can expect to see that come forward in the next 90 days.
What is that, though? Is it, is it an actual project that's gonna be?
It's actually a zoning tool that allows for a unified development plan of a large area into which different development zones will come in over probably the course of 20 years of varying sizes. So you'll see different housing, different multi-use facilities come in over time, but it's not a massive 26,000 house development.
So all they're doing is setting the framework for that subsequent conversation?
Yes, this is the enabling zoning tool they use. This was an oversight in 2006, there was no fee associated with it, and that's why this isn't for you tonight.
Okay, yeah. Anything else on this? If not, we can go to a roll call.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Mayor Ohtani? Aye. Ordinance 11681 passes by a vote of 7-0, let's move to item nine.
Public hearing Carmadel-Soul Annexation District, report from city manager, hearing.
City manager's communication number 289, date September 4, is received into and made part of the record. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time and place legally advertised for a public hearing on the proposed annexation district located on Campbell Avenue, immediately north of the intersection of Campbell Avenue and River Road. This public hearing is scheduled to last for no more than one hour, speakers are limited to five-minute presentations. Councilmember Durham, you have a place to go with this?
Yeah. Carrie, are you?
She's here.
I would just like to say that, you go first.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Carrie Silvan, Lazarus Silvan and Bangs, 5983 East Grant Road, representing the St. Phillips Office Park LLC, John Michael Sarikas and Vaya Merriman Trust, and the Robert Murphy Trust that own the various parcels in the potential annexation district. The timetable for this pre-annexation and development, I'm sorry, the timetable for this public hearing was set forth in a pre-annexation and development agreement that was entered into between those three, represent those three of my clients and, and you all. We have, so the city scheduled this public hearing based on that pre-annexation and development agreement. We've been working with the city staff and all of you, as well as many of the neighbors and our closest neighbors on this project moving forward. We have been working to mitigate some of the concerns. One of these properties is actually already zoned TR, which permits office and hotel and restaurant uses. It will be developed, and we felt it was more appropriate, which is why we entered into this agreement, for it to be annexed into the city and to be a part of the city at this location. At this time, we want some more time to work with the neighbors before beginning that one-year annexation process, which is what was supposed to start this evening. We understand that means we will need to start this whole process over again, and we plan to do that in due course. So we are not moving forward.
Okay, Carrie, can we amend the timeframe for the public hearing?
Well, we can work, well.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we scheduled the public hearing because it was our obligation under the annexation and development agreement to hold the public hearing within this timeframe. But if the other parties to the annexation agreement, which has just been described, are essentially waiving that right to have that hearing now, recognizing that that means we'll have to start the annexation process over again in order to allow the kind of engagement that was just described, I don't think we need to amend the annexation and development agreement. We have it on the record here tonight that it's the party's understanding as to what will happen if the public hearing is, it doesn't go forward tonight, we'll start, restart the annexation process at the appropriate time after the community engagement that's been described.
All right, let me address the audience, so I think what, does that mean, Mr. Rankin, that if the moving party is prepared not to start the annexation agreement tonight, that then there's no need for the public hearing tonight?
It certainly, that's correct, and the mayor and council would not have to conduct the public hearing tonight. And what that would mean is, is that the annexation
Hold on, we have options.
What that would mean is that no further steps in the annexation process would occur unless and until the annexation petition was refiled, in which case, a public hearing would be required before anything could move forward.
And since folks apparently came all the way down and want to be heard, hold on, hold on, don't hold on, bad trouble. We could hold, we could hold the public hearing and leave it open based on what would then thereafter happen. Well, no, let's hear from the attorney, okay?
You can hold the public hearing if that's your decision.
Okay, I mean, I mean, so here's, let me, Carrie, thank you for that. So, there's a couple things that I don't think have been clear to people from what, because we've all been, received all your emails. The, you'd think we were in the state legislature or something. So, the way this works is we start an annexation process, and that allows the process to go forward. It doesn't say what the result of a zoning will be. So there's, once we start it, and we could start it tonight, or we could continue another public hearing, there's a year process to get it done. In that year, all of the concerns that have been addressed, and I'm gonna address the principal ones, view shed, compatibility with St. Phillips, traffic, and drainage, and I'm just naming the ones that come to my mind, I'm sure there's others.
Building height.
That's, that's view shed, that's, that's a fancy word for view shed.
And design, I think, design compatibility, design.
Yeah, I said that, too. We get a lot of, we all say it a bunch, so we hear it a bunch. Would all be worked through to see if there could become a resolution. There's no saying that if these guys start the annexation process, that we're gonna approve what they want, okay? So that's number one, I don't think anyone understood that. Number two, and I'm sure most of you know, the people that own this are the people that own the Jostler Center, so, you know, it's a center that is a great pride of that area. We, and I want you to think about this, and we're not gonna resolve anything tonight other than let you talk to us for an hour, but we had a council person, this is in council member Durham's ward, his predecessor was a woman named Karen Ulrich, who was very protective of neighborhoods and, and the like, and, but what she ultimately came to was, she would ask people, well, if not this, then what, okay? And so you have to look at the existing zoning, because we cannot, either the city or the county, we cannot, there's a law called 207, a state constitutional law, we cannot take back zoning, we cannot lower zoning, okay? On the west side of Campbell, it is zoned for one house for, per acre, and so, and I think it's three and a half acres, that would be three houses. The proposal, and that's the initial proposal, doesn't mean it's gonna happen, is for seven houses, okay? The west side, I'm sorry, the east side, which is of, I think, the one we're hearing the most concern, is already zoned for a hotel and restaurant, so it could happen without anybody coming to us, anybody coming to the county, they can build it. They would have to go through some of the same processes, drainage, and looking at traffic and the like, but they can build it without us doing anything. And so, this kind of, this, this process, which can be painful for everybody, actually oftentimes turns into a good process if people are in good faith about it. So, and I, and I want to direct your attention to River and First, right? You just go down the street to First, and you take a right, and it's the same thing, northwest corner, if you know where that Walgreens is, right? Behind that Walgreens, I believe it had the same zoning, and we'd have to check, because I'm not certain, and what you have there now is a car wash and a self-storage center, and a really kind of blocky, I don't even know what it is, thing. And again, I think, looking within the existing zoning, they could have that. So I don't think we're gonna decide anything tonight, I know a lot of you come, have come down, so we will take the time to hear from a representative number of you. This hearing is scheduled to last for no more than hour. You get five minutes. If you don't take five minutes, more people get to talk. I think we will hear probably a lot of what I just said, in terms of what people's concerns are. And, and the way I'm gonna do it is I get Roger ready to put on the clock and get the rest of the council upset with me, because we're spending an hour, but I think we're gonna do it, the council loves it. Roger, is, I think I'm gonna hear from a few of the neighbors, and I really, it's random, okay, as best I can figure. And then I also want you to hear from the people who are developing the property, because quite frankly, if they come up here and they say, you know, look, this is the deal, we're done, that'll be an easy decision for us. If they come up here and say, look, we understand there's concerns, and we need to work this through with the neighborhood people, then, then we'll go through that process. So I'm gonna start the public hearing, seems like there's some cause for that, Paul?
I appreciate, I appreciate the feedback I've received from the community and neighbors regarding this project. I've heard concerns involving height, traffic, view shed, and historic compatibility. We'll hold the public hearing this evening, but continue the matter to give time for the developer and his attorney to engage with the neighbors and develop a new proposal to try and address these concerns.
Okay.
Well, let me comment on that, because there's been a lot of confusion about this whole process. The reality is, is that we've been told that the annexation is contingent The reality is, is that we've been told that the annexation is contingent on the project being moved forward according to what the developer's asking for. There are two people, two people who, who get to vote on the annexation. They both happen to be financial stakeholders, they're the property owners, they're the developers, the people who live around it don't have a voice in whether or not that annexation moves forward. So, Mike Chikowski could work on what you've done so far. It's usually a little more, a little more difficult than getting two people who are financially tied to a piece of property to say, "Yes, I want to come in," contingent on, on the council of eventually rubber stamping the project. I didn't bring a rubber stamp here tonight, and I would, I was prepared to vote no on the annexation, and would still do that if we, if we moved forward for it. So, this is proposed to be a four-story hotel, not two-story, that's, that's allowed under the existing zoning. The property to the west of Campbell will over, more than double the, the density that's west behind the Jostler Village. And the, the subdivision, which is now largely open space, could be developed here, right? It could be developed to a, to a hotel, but it's half the height. If, if we are being told, and I guess I'd like to hear from the property owner, if we're being told that the reason we're moving forward is because we think we can double the height, and we can get more out of the city than what we could have gotten out of the county, then we ought to know that upfront, we ought to just, we ought to just say, say no to them. The process is this, though, setting aside all of what Carrie and Jonathan just said, and Paul, we were to vote on whether or not to begin the annexation process tonight. That's simply having Mike Chikowski go out and get two guys to sign a piece of paper. Then simultaneously, or concurrently, have that rezoning conversation go on, in which I was under the understanding, and still am unless I'm corrected, that if the developer doesn't get the four stories, he's going to walk away from the annexation. Well, why even begin the process if that's where we're going on?
All right, well, that's, that's a fair question. So, let's start with, and I don't know, I know there's three or four people representing the landowners tonight. So, the question is, why the city when you can go to the county and build some really ugly thing already?
Mayor, members of the council, what the pre-annexation and development agreement did was laid out what, what we felt, that my clients felt, was an appropriate and financially feasible project. We know what rezoning involves, we're not new to this process, neither are the, are the Horvass. They've worked very diligently with Fifth and, at Fifth and Campbell, with the Sam Hughes Neighborhood. So, they did not go into, nor were we intending to go into the rezoning with a, "Here's the pre-annexation and development agreement, and we're now moving forward." We had our first neighborhood meeting, we were headed to our second neighborhood meeting, and we had engaged prior to that, or after that first neighborhood meeting, with a number of our immediate neighbors who came up to us after the neighborhood meeting and said, "We'd like to work with you." So, our intention was to start the annexation, although we're done with that, my clients are not here. So, we are, we, our intention was to start the annexation this evening and continue that process and, and work it through.
The city, the circular that was sent around, and the guesses is for city staff, says it's a three-story hotel. Is it three or is it four?
I don't know what circular you're looking at.
Well, I'm looking at, I'm asking city staff.
Who said that?
Somebody just said it's inconsistent in all of the documents.
Well, if, if the city sent a circular around asking for departmental response or feedback on a proposed project that's 25% smaller than what they're actually intending to build, then that circular needs to go back through again with the accurate information on it.
Or if that's accurate, these guys out here should know that, because they've got themselves all worked up about a four-story hotel.
Fair enough. And, and to the people in the audience, you guys really need to consider incorporating. We're leaving millions of dollars' worth of state shared revenues up in Phoenix that belongs here in this area. If you don't want to be members of the city, incorporate, but bring those dollars here one way or another.
And quite frankly, your households, the way it works is, it's $300 per person. So, your households, quite frankly, in the foothills, have a much greater value to the region and the strength of the region than does any hotel, okay? But, 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 I've been sitting here for eight years, and every week I say this, and every time I move north of River Road, I get this, okay? And it isn't about being in the city and the county, it's about having a strong region, because that money, so your sales tax, I know you think you pay a 9.25% sales tax, but 6.6 of that goes to the state, we don't see it back.
It goes to Scottsdale. No, I'm serious.
Or Glendale. Anyway, and then the income tax, which you pay, is the same thing. And we get our money back, property tax stays here, right, both primary and secondary. And quite frankly, for your secondary property tax, you would get your fire service, you would get those guys for way cheaper, and you would get your waste management, or your, what you call waste manager in Old Republic, our system, for way cheaper. And it's a little hard for us when we try to go into, you know, a little north with a, with a development that on its face looks like it's done well, doesn't mean it is, doesn't mean there can't be work done, and then we see people who are like, "Oh, yeah, we don't want this, but we also don't make the effort." It's a really simple process. You draw, you could talk to Mr. Chikowski, who I know you've met, you can draw a line around a neighborhood, it doesn't have to be very big, and you get 51% of your people to sign it. And honest to God, that value to us is more in every respect, because now not only do you have a vote, which I think, at least I, I don't know about all these guys, would appreciate having, I'm sure, I love this, now I'll just turn this into a regular classroom. How many of you are on city water? Raise your hand. Most of you, right? Okay. You don't get a vote on the people who decide your water rates or anything else, or your water service. And I've always called that waterization without representation, you know? And, and it just, it's, I've, by the way, just so you know, and, and converts are the worst, I grew up at the corner of, well, I didn't grow up, yeah, I grew up in Orange Grove Park, I grew up in Ina and Oracle, lived in town a little, lived at Campbell, First and, First and Ina, so I know all those roads very well, and, you know, and then I've decided it was best to move into the city, because it was too hard to annex all the way up there. But you guys really need to think about that the city is not your enemy, and that we've been really responsible, and that are, no, and that are...
We have a history, last year.
There's a lot of history, there's a lot of history. And, and that, and that we've had, at least over the past eight years, incredible success here, passing road bonds, park bonds, police and fire bonds. And so, I, I'm perfectly happy to get 10, 12 speakers tonight, so we can get a sense of what your concern is, but I, I don't want to kill the process tonight, and I'm perfectly happy, you know, to hold the process for a month or whatever it is till you guys can meet. But the things, quite frankly, that I saw today coming were, and I know everybody's passionate, but it's not that black and white, and it can be worked through. So, I'll just leave it at that. Councilmember Romero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you all for coming to downtown and coming into the city of Tucson. I think what we're talking about are two things that we're convoluting. One is the possibility of annexation, which I absolutely agree with you, and Councilmember Kozachek, I think we all hold a very similar, a very similar thoughts in terms of annexation. We are leaving millions of dollars in Phoenix. And we do have to talk as a community, as a region, about annexation or incorporation, because we are leaving more than $70 million in Phoenix that should come to this region, whether it is the city of Tucson, or Pima County, or the town of the foothills. And so, but, saying that about the importance of annexation and having the, the city of Tucson seek annexations, we also are talking about a potential project. And so, I think it's a bit unfair to tie annexation with a project that already has the path of where it wants to go. I think it's very important to be able to have continued conversation with the residents that live in the area, and I think this is a perfect opportunity. We will have a public hearing, so we could hear what the issues that you're concerned about, but there should also be additional public meetings with the developers in the area, so that you could talk about what you want to see. I also know that in this particular area, there is what is called Pima Prosperous, which has specific restrictive language on the Catalina foothills. There also are constriccions on heights of buildings in this area, and the Board of Supervisors reserves the right to limit construction in this area to one story. I know that people are concerned that the act of annexation will give the development entitlements that they do not currently have in county policy. That's why people are here. And so, we understand that. So, I don't know if, if we do the public hearing and we keep the public hearing open, if that's something that we can do, or if the public hearing is for mayor and council to listen to the issues of the neighbors, and we close the public hearing and then have the developers decide what they do. I don't know what is the, the course of action that we're taking as of right now, Mr. Mayor.
I think these folks want to be at least partially heard, so we can do that. I think I'll call in five or six of them, and then maybe see if one of the other owners wants to address her not. We'll go for an hour, we got time. And then I think it'll be up to Mr. Durham, but I, I thought what I heard him say was that we would continue the public hearing to allow the parties...
So, this is what I don't understand. We're going to continue the public hearing at the end of this discussion when I don't even, I don't see this annexation happening anyway. I'd rather see this, I'd rather see the town of Catalina foothills get formed. I don't really want, I mean, it... Well, hold on, hold on, because I want to make this also clear. I'm, I'm somebody who's lived in the city my whole life, and I'm very resentful of people who live north of the river and come in and use city services and don't pay their share. I am, I'm that guy. I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Okay, okay, hold on, Paul, Paul.
Excuse me. All I'm saying...
Councilmember Cunningham, let's get back...
All I'm, all I'm saying is, is that I'd love to have that incorporation discussion. I think that's a way better discussion to have for our whole community. The Catalina foothills as a city, if it became a town, would have a higher per capita expenditure, double for services than the city of Tucson would. You guys would be able to handle all your police and fire service on your state share revenues alone. So, it's a, it's a great conversation to have, and I hope you have it.
Okay, all right, so here's what we're going to do. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to, we're going to start the public hearing, because there's people here that want to be heard, and then we'll take it from there. So, I am going to start, remember you get five minutes, but if you don't take the five minutes, it gives somebody else, instead of having 12 people be heard, maybe we get 14 people heard. So, we will start with Thomas Pugh Jr. Is there such a person? There he is.
So...
Use the higher one, works better.
There you go, Thomas. Thanks. Honorable Mayor Rothschild and, and council members, I really appreciate your, giving me the opportunity to be here, since I'm a foreigner, I live in the Catalina foothills. And I understand there is some conflicts between the two entities, and I agree with everybody who hopes that we would incorporate 100%. So, you've covered some of the things by postponing this that I intended to say. So, I've lived, I've lived in, on Campbell Wash at 54, 5445 North Camino Esquina for 46 years. My house is less than a mile from this proposed hotel, restaurant, and office buildings. And I have assisted in financing and served as a witness in two successful efforts to block housing developments in Campbell Wash floodplain. The first successful effort was in 1993 on, it was called the Miraval Development on Juan Posano. After months of study in which the county ruled against development in the floodplain, the developer brought a lawsuit to try to overrule that, that decision by the county, and that was ultimately decided in Superior Court in favor of the county's ruling that no houses could be built in the floodplain. The second successful effort occurred in 2005. There were two houses proposed for the Wash. One was by a developer by the name of, of Teufel, and that was a, a intrusion into the Wash from Camino Esquina, and the other one was just off Alas Vientos, just north of Alas Vientos, that's about 800 yards from this hotel's plan. At that point, the county, the Army Corps of Engineers was brought in. The Campbell Wash belongs, is, is waters of the United States of America, so it is underregulate, is regulated by the Army Corps of Engineers. Eventually, and we, we did a series of studies, we had a difficult time finding hydrologists in this community who would take on our cause, because then they wouldn't have any work, since homeowners usually don't have much sway with, with those people. And the outcome of that effort was decided unanimously against floodplain construction of any kind by the Pima County Board of Supervisors, sitting as the Pima County Floodplain Control Board, and bless our dear departed Ann Day, who represented my area, and I, who I got to know. She was a marvelous, marvelous, marvelous counselor, and, and just deserves every accolade I could possibly imagine. So, here comes Campbell Wash floodplain building project that dwarfs everything that's happened before. And, and begin with, it requires band fill in the US, in waters of the United States. It will require extensive modifications to the Wash necessary to handle the large increasing volumes of water that flow down Campbell Wash. We have unbelievable pictures of standing waves in the Campbell Wash, and my two sons, who grew up on the Wash, used to raft through there. So, I know this is inconceivable for people who aren't native to this area, or who haven't lived on these washes. So, anyhow, the other issues that would be brought up in, in deciding what will happen to this piece of property are access to Campbell Avenue that requires further fill, potential diversions of water and across the Wash, and the planned hotel and office restaurant require an environmental assessment that includes circulation, air quality, greenhouse gas, climate change, noise, visual impacts and effects on the national register property on both sides of the road. So, I would like to submit, in a way, you've sort of disarmed me, but I would like to submit, before you hasten in annexing this property, at the very least, you assess the likelihood that this property will ever qualify for the level of taxpayer citizenship the city would desire, because I don't believe that can happen there. Instead, you may be harnessing yourselves and Tucson City taxpayers to a permanent financial sinkhole. Those who have attempted to date, to dip a toe in these floodwaters suffered in 2003 and again in 2005. There's a good reason no one has attempted to do this again until now. So, thank you very much, I appreciate your reconsider... I appreciate your reconsidering.
Penny Kouts, is Penny here?
I thought I only had three minutes, so I made it like two and a half.
That's great.
And I'm telling you, I never realized how long three minutes could be when you're on... No offense to the other speakers, but anyway. My name is Penny Kouts. I have lived in Pima County for about 22 years, and my home is about a mile and a half, if that, from River and Campbell, on the west side of Campbell. We've lived there for two decades, and I've been a Tucson resident since 1977, so I have lived in the city limits.
Thank you.
And love the city. But our home is also on the national register. It is a jostler, and it is on the register. We have a vested interest in keeping this flavor and, you know, of the old foothills. I just want to say that I also own a small business in the city of Tucson, at 2700 North Campbell Avenue, called Adobe House Antiques. Please feel free to shop. So, I do pay taxes, and I also was a, one of the first social workers for COPE, for Chronically Mentally Ill, which is in the city limits, and also a Tucson Unified School District social worker for over 14 years. So, my involvement in the city has been extensive, and living here since 1977. What I want to say, we were all taken completely by surprise. I feel I'm a neighborhood advocate. I usually know what's going on. I was on vacation, I get a message from a neighbor saying, "Oh, my God, there's a meeting with developers down at, you know, the Windmill Inn." And I said, "For what?" And they said, "Oh, they're annexing the city." And basically, we all have now tried to play catch-up. None of us knew this was coming. We were told it was planned probably starting in February. We did not find out anything until this first meeting. So, I feel we were blindsided. We were caught off guard, we were ambushed with absolutely nothing to say about it. I don't even think we have a Pima County supervisor present tonight. Where's our representation? Maybe they say... I called their office. I shouldn't ramble here. I called their office. Call the developer's lawyer. That was the response from our supervisor. Again...
Was that Ms. Miller?
So, thank God all of you represent your constituents, because you do, and I've heard it tonight. You have concerns about the people you represent. We have no one right now. We only have us. That's who we have, just the residents. We were told, "This is a done deal. This is a true statement. This is a done deal. You are going to be annexed. The city wants your tax dollars. You have no say. The church has no say, because they do not pay taxes. And you guys have no say either, because once you're annexed, you're not in the city of Tucson." So, that's what we were told. So, what it felt like was...
Where did that come from, Ms. Miller's office?
Everybody's saying this.
Just all this going around.
So, we feel, we feel really helpless. That's the feeling that I have as a neighbor, helpless. Who's standing up for us, other than us? Who's standing up for the church? Did they choose to be annexed? No. Why are they annexed? Because they're going to be able to touch the piece of property that wants to be annexed. That's the only reason. You didn't come out trying to annex the city. This was chosen by, as Steve said, two people, two developers. I've lived there for 22 years, and in 22 years, that property has had a for-sale sign on it. We know it has been zoned TR1. We know it can accommodate a restaurant, a two-story hotel, and office buildings. I don't think any of us are saying, "Go backwards and take all of that away." What we're saying is, "Why are we being rezoned when you can build a two-story hotel with the zoning that exists right now?" And whoever chooses to use that property, that zoning exists. Then they work with us, and then they work with us about design. We're not saying, "Take back that zoning." We're not asking you to take back that zoning. It's been that way 22 years since I've lived there. There's a reason it has not been developed. There must be a lot of issues, or somebody else would have come along. This isn't a new thing here. It's been sitting there empty, at least for 22 years.
Okay, ma'am, thank you. You're due time.
I'm done.
Bob Molnar?
Sir, Bob Molnar? I would like to say in response to that, though, when somebody develops according to the terms of the underlying zoning, there's not a requirement that they hold public outreach meetings. So, consider that, too.
Go ahead, sir.
Hi, my name is Bob Molnar. I'm an area resident. I've lived in Catalina Number 7 for about 45 years, the same house we built when I was 20-some years old, and been there for 40-some years. I'm also a retired county employee who had 36 years of service in the Department of Transportation for Pima County, 30 of which have been in the Traffic Engineering, Traffic Operations section. My concern is mainly dealing with those areas of expertise, or areas that I have expertise in. The traffic plan, traffic developments are, as it is now, understandably incomplete, and to my knowledge and my experience, they're inadequate for what's going on and what's planned. There's things like the design speed for the development along Campbell Avenue is not adequate in my estimation. The intersection site distance is not adequate, that's been proposed by the consulting traffic engineer. There are issues that relate to what's called LOS, Level of Service, in the traffic engineering profession. Level of Service means how well a road or intersection is operating. I haven't done a 100% review of the consultant's traffic analysis, but I don't recall seeing anything mentioned in his report about the existing level of service at the intersection of Campbell and River. This development, if it goes through, will negatively impact that level of service. It doesn't take much, if you read the books, traffic engineering books, traffic operation books, to change a level of service from an A to B, B to C, so on and so forth. It's like grades in grade school. A is good, B, C, D, and F. A minor influx of traffic at that intersection will have negative, negative impacts on that intersection. There aren't any plans to do any improvements to that intersection, let alone looking at what is going on with adjusting the traffic signal, the traffic signal timing. All that will impact how the intersection works, and how the road works north of River Road, and how the roadway works on River Road itself. So, those are some of the concerns that I have. You know, we mentioned something about, the mayor mentioned about First Avenue and River Road. My division, my section that I worked in, we took it from a stop sign intersection to a traffic signal, so have very good knowledge about what's going on there. There are issues that just aren't being addressed in the traffic report. We don't have a good traffic plan to review about right turn lanes, about deceleration rates, which I'm at opposition to. I don't believe, again, the design speed takes into effect the deceleration lanes, turning movements, site, intersection site distance, the type of traffic that I'll be using, the hotel and the development. Talking about some type of service vehicles, have intersection site distance calculations been done for any service vehicles entering there? There's also impact that a lot of people don't think about. There was a mention earlier by one of the gentlemen that there's going to be increased pollution, increased delays in this. There is also a comment made in the traffic report about a HAWK signal in there. HAWK is a pedestrian-activated traffic signal, if you will, to get people across the road. That will in itself also affect how well the intersection of River and Campbell functions. So, many of these issues need to be looked at more thoroughly than just moving forward. So, that's why I'm opposed to annexation, development without much more conversations, and there haven't been those kind of conversations. I got somewhat of a lecture, if you will, maybe grossly exaggerated, from the consulting traffic engineer about, "Oh, well, we did this, we looked at this, we looked at that." I developed some of the standards that are still being used by Pima County and by the city of Tucson, so I don't need a lecture. I need a discussion about how these things can be made better if this development goes forward. Can we address accident rates? What are the accident rates going to be? What's the delays going to be at the intersection? What the level of service is going to be? Will there be any improvements at the intersection of River and Campbell? Traffic signal timing, how will that be affected? Those are the issues that I'm dealing with, that I'm concerned about. I have the experience, I have some knowledge. I haven't been employed by Pima County a number of years, but I still have that expertise and experience. Thank you, Mayor.
Bob, I appreciate that. I mean, I do see as one of the opportunities here. I mean, we all know what the mess is at Campbell and River, and we've been working on the south side with St. Phillips Plaza, and that's very difficult. And there is, you know, it would take the experts, our city manager was the state traffic engineer, so I think he knows a little. But... It was a mistake on my part. Go ahead.
You can see what happens when there isn't a lot of thought and consideration given to development. The plaza, St. Phillips Plaza...
Yep.
Trader Joe's. Anybody that goes to Trader Joe's...
Boo. Guys don't love Trader Joe's? Jeez. I guess it's for, it's for those young people.
When there aren't considerations given, serious considerations, there are considerations given to how a development can impact traffic. Next speaker, please.
We'll get there. No, but it's a good point, and I think there is opportunity, at least from what I've seen, to the north of River to do some things with traffic mitigation, which could help St. Phillips, could help everything. So, and again, that's something that, as we move forward, if we move forward, that would have to be addressed, so... All part of, all part of it. Okay. Carrie, my understanding is you're here now on your own, is that correct? Do you want to address anything at this point, or just let's listen to the rest of what the comments are? Okay. Let's go on to Fran Krakow. Oh, we got forever.
Good evening, everyone. We moved here 15 years ago from New York, and so, we picked this spot, and I hope you're not too resentful of me, because we wanted to be out of the city. My husband was there on 9/11, and that's why we moved to Tucson, to look at greenery. We retired at the city, and he obviously suffered from that day. And I teach in Tucson. So, I live in the county, but I teach in the city of Tucson. This is my 46th year of teaching, and I wanted to talk about how, when we first moved here, I was thrilled that Trader Joe's was going to be built right at the corner. We only live a half a mile up Campbell from River. So, I was really hoping to use my New York shopping cart again and walk down Campbell to shop. Well, guess what? You can't. You can't walk down Campbell. And in this day and age, I have to pull out my car to go a half a mile to shop at Trader Joe's. That's not the way we should be heading. We should make it easier for everybody to walk. And right now, I can't even pull out of my driveway. Luckily, a school bus came, and I could ease out and get into the southbound lane. But if that school bus hadn't been there going northbound, I couldn't get out. So, it's impossible for traffic, and it's impossible to walk. And I think you need to look at pedestrians, and we need to use our cars a little less, especially when you just live down the block from the supermarket.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Jojean Mills. For the last five years I've lived, for the last 25 years, I've lived within five miles of this property. I've also, for 15 years, represented one of the homeowners' associations in the area. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. I had a lot to say, but we don't have to say it now. So, what I want to say is, thank you for the respect you've shown to all of us who came down tonight. Thank you for some of your comments about this particular set of behaviors that looked very alarming to some of us. And thank you for your comments about the good arguments in favor of annexation and incorporation, and/or incorporation. I have to say, in 25 years, maybe I've missed it, but I haven't seen a concerted effort by the city to really look at annexing a big swath of the foothills. Maybe it's time we did that. You've got a lot of email addresses now. Feel free to use mine to send me information about that. Maybe we should have a conversation about that. But again, thank you very much for the consideration you've shown tonight. It's more than we've had from our representatives.
Thank you, Jojean. Warren Edminster? Is Warren here?
Who's next? Who's next? Doesn't make a matter of when I stop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. It's been a very refreshing afternoon. I've enjoyed this greatly. I should come back again more frequently. Yeah. I live in the Catalina Pueblo subdivision, which is substantially at the intersection of Campbell and Sunrise. And we scoot up and down Campbell every day, and several times sometimes. And we just like to make sure, and this is really not something that can be done today, so I really wasn't prepared for the way this thing worked out. But when the final design comes up, whatever it is in that area, we'd like to make sure that the bicyclists get a chance to shoot at it, too, because we have a great deal of bicycle traffic up and down that area, and we're concerned about traffic being expanded. So, that's all I had to say, and I thank you for listening.
Yeah, that's a, going up Campbell, that's a rough road for bikes. That's a tough one. Friar Robert Hendrickson?
Humility is a virtue. Now, I have to make another confession, so thanks for that, but anyway. The first thing I want to begin with is just thank you. And thank you to the Horvaths, thank you, Carrie, because I think this demonstrates that we do have an opportunity to have some real dialogue going forward about what a robust partnership could... robust partnership could look like in developing the area in a way that makes the most sense for the widest number of people. So I think that is the first thing I want to acknowledge, is that we have this opportunity to begin freshly. And the first thing I want to offer to the mayor, to the council, is if you want to come on down and have a conversation about annexation on its own, I will host it, I'll provide water, coffee, and beer afterward, so don't worry. But I think what's important is for people to recognize just how, well, Mayor, you complained a little bit about the volume of email you got. Because I believe in hostess gifts, this is my first time coming here, so I've brought you a gift. This is seven copies of 330 letters I've gotten in the last eight days. I give it to you with, with no gift receipt.
I cannot refuse a gift from a man of cloth.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, my child.
If it's clean paper, you can just recycle it and compost it.
But what I think is important is that our members, for generations, have been part of the fabric of this city. We are not interlopers. If you think about, St. Luke's Home was founded by parishioners from St. Phillips, St. Albans Episcopal Church and the Gregory School, St. Michael and All Angels and St. Michael's School, Christ the King Episcopal Church in Oro Valley and Interfaith Community Services, Imago Dei School, Pima County Interfaith, and more, are all efforts that were started, that were incubated at St. Phillips and the Hills. So when an annexation proposal comes, and we get the annexation notice at the same time as two vacant lots next to us, that's a problem. We have 1,820 members who are invested in this community, who are invested in creating a neighborhood that we can all be proud of, where everyone can thrive. We have folks who are on the board of the Community Food Bank of Casa Salidas, who are part of every major social initiative in this city. And so I want to make sure that we don't come here as interlopers, that we don't come here as people just complaining, "Not in my backyard." When I was in Denver, we raised $12 million to build 52 units of housing for homeless women right in the center of the city. And I have to tell you, I was on the other side of this conversation. Every neighbor was mad at me, but we did it because it was the right thing to do. And so we are more than committed to do the right thing, and we're happy to be partners in doing the right thing all across this city. So I invite that conversation, and I thank you for this opportunity to partner together and to move forward with a process that's best for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I think that said a lot. We still have another 26 minutes of this, so we'll see who wants to do it. Ann Ellsbury?
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. I had been prepared to cede my time to Father Robert. I am a member of St. Phillips. I have been since before Carrie and I had graduated from law school. I live in the city in Ward 6. I am also a legal defender for the county of Pima. I have some real concerns about the pre-annexation development agreement. One of the problems that we've seen in it is the financials. They don't seem to have taken into account the costs that will be associated with St. Phillips and the Hills Episcopal Church being incorporated into the city. Right now, the financials that we've seen have, at least for the first three years, big old zeros, because they're assuming that those three years is before the hotel or any other development is done. But it doesn't take into account that St. Phillips and the Hills is a going concern. Monday through Sunday, we have anywhere from 100 to 500 people on our campus. At least 50 of those are children. We have a preschool that is there Monday through Friday, we have an after-school program in the afternoons as well, we have all of our religious services and ceremonies that are going on, we have a counseling center, we have many 12-step programs that meet there, many other community organizations that meet there. Frankly, we are one of the largest community gathering places in that part of the city. We have been fortunate, while we've been part of the county, to have incredibly quick response by the Sheriff's Department. One of the benefits of our, of our long history here is we have a huge art collection that has not gone unnoticed by people who might want to steal those things, and frankly, in the time that we live in right now, we are what is considered a soft target. I don't know if the city is actually prepared to protect St. Phillips and the Hills, that they know what they're going to need, because in that, in the PATA, it says that there's no costs for police and fire for this area for the first three years, but once this development is done, that there's a hotel there, they will need to place one new police officer for that area. I think they're either completely underestimating what St. Phillips and the Hills Church needs, or they are acknowledging that a hotel in this spot is not a particularly safe use of the space. And I'll tell you this as a public defender. I could look at the 50 cases that I have right now on my docket, and I could tell you, at least 25 of them happened at a hotel, whether it has to do with prostitution, sales and uses of drugs, shootings, murder, and other crimes of moral turpitude, domestic violence incidences, DUIs. Hotels are not exactly the best neighbors, even the best hotels. I have cases that involved Lodge on the Desert, the Doubletree, Ventana Canyon, La Paloma. And so we believe that this is a really important thing that the mayor and council needs to take into consideration before annexing St. Phillips and the Hills. One, we need protection, and, two, the uses that are being suggested right now for the property just to the north of our property are not necessarily conducive to the kind of community that we have created here. And certainly not conducive to some of our future plans for that property, for having children and elderly people on our property and being given services, comfort, sucker, and being fed both physically and spiritually. And I'd ask that the council and the mayor take that into consideration before going forward with the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Martin Florchinger. I'm an architect and planner. I've been in practice in Tucson for over 35 years. I am here representing St. Phillips and the Hills, and as you might tell, we are the silent partner in all of this, so to speak, an unwilling partner. We were never asked, we were just thrown in the fray. In fact, if it wasn't for St. Phillips, this would never be before you, because the rezoning or, and/or the annexation are an island, totally isolated from the city. So because we are a church, we don't get a say. Because there are days we have 1,000 people on our property, we don't get a say. Okay? I'm also a member of the church, and you just heard from my wife. I live in Ward, we both live in Ward 6. My whole career in planning and development, where I've been fortunate to work with very, very good people, very good developers, very good communities, very well-intentioned people in many communities around the country, and that is the key right there, well-intentioned. Okay? You can add all these little nuances about, is it 40 feet tall, or is it 45 feet tall, and is it here, or is it here? The whole thing is, what is the intention? What is their intention? And the intention here ought to be to further what that entrance into the whole Catalina foothills has always been, the historic character of it, the importance of the, of the church. And it's, it's very frustrating for the people to say, we don't have a say. Now legally, we understand maybe why we don't have a say, but that's wrong. We've been used to basically make this even happen, which might turn out to be a waste of all of our time in the end. Okay? I look forward to working with the developer in a much different approach to this. You need to go to the community first, not last. You can't be reading a document if you live in the community, or if you're involved with the church, that already has in it when the next hearing's going to be, and when the hearing after that's going to be, and it's a contract to get this thing done by a certain date, and it's supposed to have a four-story hotel, and it's supposed to have, I thought we were talking about annexation here. We're not talking about annexation, we're talking about a done deal, packaged deal. And that package is what has brought all of these people here. That's wrong to have that, that kind of a package going here. It's not the way the process works. We look forward to working with a better process on this. And when you go, oh, well, it's just a four-story building, so I really, you know, I've been here a long time. So I thought, well, okay, I'll start out the Ringcons, and I'll drive all the way to Stone, that's where we're at, and then I'll start north of Speedway, excluding the university, and I'll drive all the way to the boundary of the national forest. I challenge any of you, if you know, I'd like to know where it is, a private four-story building within that area, not a building in a hospital complex, not one of the universities. You know, the old windmill inn, three stories. You know, there's a reason why it is. I was on the board of Ventana Canyon for years. I ran the architectural approval there. I know what a battle all of this is, but the biggest things in the foothills are not four stories. It's not a little deal to the people around it, and it's definitely not a little deal to the church. We just would like to be included, whether we legally are included, whether we have a vote. I think if we have an objection, it should be heard. I am unbelievable, what I was going to say tonight, okay, compared to what I'm saying right now, but this is a very positive thing. I'm proud of all of you. Thank you.
All right, Dan Kouts?
As the others have said, thank you very much for giving us the time. Can you hear me now? Good. Thank you. My name is Dan Kouts, and one thing's a little unusual about me is I'm an owner of three parcels that are right around the annexation district. And actually, two of them have been improved by myself with one-story structures, and one is vacant, and all of them are zoned TR, and they bought the district for approximately 1,700 feet. So I'm intimately involved with this area. And one thing I will say, the traffic situation is very strange on that Campbell curve. My office is right across the street, and I drive down and up that office a couple of times a day for the last 15 years, and it really is a difficult area. The other thing is that we approached buying that piece of land a number of years ago and didn't for two reasons. One were traffic considerations, and they could probably handle, and these would be different codes in a different time, but they were just very expensive and very difficult, and also, as Tom Pugh mentioned, the hydrological considerations were also very difficult. So just some aside, some personal history I have with that property. And I'd also like to say, some of this has been said, but I'll try and be brief, that this has been a rough, confusing time for all of us, because we've just heard about this process so recently. And Mike did a good job introducing us to the annexation and zoning during a city meeting, but that was literally six days ago. And in that time, we've had the holidays, so it's also been made more difficult by the decision to run the annexation and rezoning concurrently, concurrently, and of course, each part is complicated, particularly to newcomers, but running them together makes it very difficult for many of us to understand the rules, and particularly under such a compressed timeframe. But one thing I think has come out of this, all this confusion, that is very clear, and that is the main reason the two landowners brought this annexation to the city, was to increase their chances of drastically chaining, changing a land use in a way that would be sure to fail in the county. I think that's my perception at least. And this annexation does not serve the greater good. And I know from the vast majority of members at St. Phillips Church don't want to be annexed, I think as we can evidence by the box, that they were added to the district nonetheless. And I believe this was two reasons, for two reasons, and I found this interesting. First of all, the landowners needed the church land to meet the 300-foot border requirement, so without it, they couldn't have met the needs of, of the state law. And second, the developers knew, or the landowners knew, that the church wouldn't be able to vote, and therefore couldn't interfere and effectively express their wishes. I think this, it meets the criteria of state law, but it just doesn't feel fair. And that got under my skin, frankly. And I believe this annexation with such far-reaching consequences, as we've heard of all these different parts of the church and the history of the area, should take into account far more than the goals of two property owners, which is really why this came about. I talked to Mike, and he said that often the city goes to areas to annex places, and this was the reverse, and it's kind of a small, oddly-shaped annexation, in my view. But it's more than redrawing lines on the map. This annexation is the first step to create, and again, as we perceive it, and you're helping with us tonight, but as we perceived it, to create an incompatible urban land use in a very high-profile transitional suburban part of Tucson. I mean, I think it's worth pointing out that next to this four-story hotel, and we've gotten pictures of representations, and they're, they're just mammoth structures, I mean, very long, and it's got a 10,000-foot office on one side, and 8,000-foot restaurant on the other, and, you know, an 8,000-foot restaurant is a huge restaurant. And I think that endorsing the annexation process, this rushed process, seemed like it would aid in the development of this multiplex, which just doesn't make sense, and I think is potentially dangerous. And I'm sure that there are many good reasons for a city to annex land, and to do it in a way that does make sense to all the stakeholders, and in a way that makes our community better. But following the request of these two landowners in this situation is not in the broader, best interests of Tucson. Thank you very much for your time.
Carrie, Ms. Sylvan, there was a question that was sort of in that, and you may have already answered it, and I'm not recalling, you may have answered it at the beginning, but the question was, why did these developers come to the city as opposed to the county? And of course, the implication, without knowing more, is, oh, you could get a better deal from the city, and I think there's more history that you might want to.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, there were a number of reasons that they were interested in coming into the city. The hotel parcel, I'm going to call it, that developer actually owns and has been stewarding the Jostler Village for quite some time, has some other ownership interests at that intersection, and very much has, has in the past enjoyed working with the, the city on those developments, and wanted to continue to work with the same jurisdiction through, through that development. There's also the ability to have Campbell Road, the intersection, is currently within the city, but this allows the city to control a little bit more of Campbell Avenue to the north, as well as over to the east, so that we can have a little bit more control under one jurisdiction of how traffic is, is managed, brings the impact fees into the city. They also wanted to, you know, in order to get this, the increased height, which is part of what's in the request, they would have had to go through the same rezoning process in the county, so this wasn't bifurcating a process, and it's still required working with the neighbors. There's no question, so there's no getting around a process as part of this. But they really, they've, as I think I've said before, but I may not have, they've worked with the city on a number of projects before as well. At Fifth and Campbell, I mentioned that, and then there was a, the prior Ward 3 council member who, I believe, Mayor, you quoted, there was an apartment complex that was caused member who, I believe, Mayor, you quoted, there was an apartment complex that was causing some serious nuisance issues in the area, and that council member reached out to this developer and asked that they help. They came in, they bought it, they fixed it up and assisted with that. So they are good stewards. They want to continue, they have ownership in the area, and I believe we have reached out and have been working with the father as well on some of those architectural and other issues. So they very much, and they wanted to be in the city.
Yeah, so just so everyone in the audience is familiar with the two projects that Carrie's mentioning, one of the projects that they did was Fifth and Campbell. That would be the southeast corner, Sam Hughes Place. So if you've ever been to Sam Hughes Place, you have some sense of the quality. I'm looking at a blank stairs. Yeah, you guys don't go to that side of the university, huh? That's where I walk for my pizza every night. But, so if you drive by Fifth and Campbell, in this southeast corner, you can see the quality of that work. The other one that Carrie mentioned, and maybe some of you remember it, maybe some of you don't, was on Fort Lowell and Campbell. You take, from coming south, you take a left on Fort Lowell, go down about two blocks, maybe Wilson Norris, a little past that, and there was a literally skeleton apartment complex, probably 200 units, that had been a public housing complex that had fallen into incredible disrepair. It was a, it was a public nuisance. It gave us all sorts of problems, and we were working to get somebody to come in, and you can take a look at it today. It's still a housing complex, but if you saw before and after, I think you would be pretty impressed by what they did. So, all right, we're going to take a couple more cards, and then I think I'll hand it over to Paul to determine where we want to go from here. Peggy Ollerhead, Oller, okay, I got close enough.
Thank you. My name is Peggy Ollerhead, and I am a resident of the city. I live at 2002 East River Road, less than a quarter mile from the proposed Carmadell Soul development. And I came tonight to speak in opposition to this project for many of the same reasons that you already discussed. First of all, was the impact on the historic character of the neighborhood, second was the impact of the traffic, and third was something that I'm really seriously interested in is the serious storm water problems that I think would be incurred due to the increase of impervious surfaces that would be encountered with the development of this nature. It would drain into the Campbell Wash, which flows under the Jostler Complex on the northwest corner of Campbell and River. And I just have to speak frankly, I'm grateful for your consideration and many of your comments, but I was here earlier this afternoon, and when I was here earlier this afternoon, I overheard your conversations with the representatives from HSL that were here. And it seemed to me at that time, you appeared to be overlooking the very serious concerns that the individuals have in this area in opposition to this project and the significant negative impacts that would be incurred by the members of the community and by the environment, too. You know, we are not the only individuals on the earth, you know? There are other neighbors that we have that are part of the environment, and I just think it would have a serious detrimental impact. And I heard them talking about a four-story structure. I heard you talking about the concerns with the communication within the city, that there was some, we're talking about a three-story structure. It just felt to me that there wasn't a very serious nature, and I just also heard about this project very recently. I didn't get any formal notification. I only heard about it by way of the grapevine, even though I live less than a quarter of a mile away. So I would just like to see some ongoing communication, and I appreciate your efforts and the comments you made tonight. And I hope that it will, the people who are members of this community will be involved in this process. Thank you very much for your...
Okay, thank you.
(inaudible) Mayor, I want your personal privilege.
Go ahead.
There's been a group called Campbell Quarter Coalition, and no one from that group has been called yet. A spokesman from that group is right here, and I suggest you call him.
Okay, I don't see anybody, I don't see anybody who's identified himself that way, but if you would like to volunteer somebody, you just go right ahead. This will be the last speaker, so... Or another person. No, 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 no. Okay.
Cheryl.
Didn't we have Cheryl speak already? Okay, here we go. Ma'am, could you move up to the larger mic? And then could you tell me your name so I can see that we got you?
My name is Cheryl Toff, T-O-F-F. I hope everyone can hear. Mayor, council members, distinguished guests, thank you for your patience and for being here. I represent the Campbell Quarter Coalition, a rapidly aggregating grassroots network who is completely opposed to the annexation and rezoning plan. I'm not going to talk about traffic too much because the mayor already called it a mess, and he described it accurately. It's a mess. And when this project goes online, according to the developer's traffic report, although they say that the traffic will increase 1% to 2% in 2021 by their own charts, the traffic for the intersection will be 33% more than 2018 Grade D levels. And the northern-bound segment of Campbell Above River will be 47.1% over Grade D, failing grade in 2018. My husband and I went to Tavallino Restaurant Saturday night, and we asked them their square footage. They say 3,000. This proposed restaurant would be two and a half times bigger than Tavallino. And on our way home, we drove down Campbell from Skyline, and we counted the curves on the road. There are 20 curves between Skyline and River, and just to be sure, we went back the next day and recounted. This is dangerous. It's life-threatening, and this would be bad for everyone. My fear is that someone will be killed coming down that road late at night, and I'd like my comments to that effect to be placed in the public record. Thank you very much.
Okay. Get a motion to close the public hearing?
The move.
Second. Okay, let me close the public hearing, then we'll... Well, go ahead. I'm sorry, Councilor Durham.
I'm advised by City Attorney Rankin that we have held a public hearing and we should close it. It makes no difference what we do to me, but I would suggest to Ms. Sylvan that we take, we take you up on your offer to have your clients engage further with the neighbors before further action occurs on the annexation. So I move we close the public hearing.
Okay. Get a second on that?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, the motion, the public hearing is now closed. Ms. Sylvan, Mr. Rankin, what do you propose is where we go from here?
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you've held your public hearing. That's required under the statutes with respect to annexation, and that was provided for under the annexation development agreement, as we talked about before. You're not required to take any further action tonight. If the desire is that, as Councilmember Durham has suggested, to take up the clients, Ms. Sylvan, on the suggestion that they engage in the, continuing in further public engagement before any further action on the annexation and/or zoning, rezoning, then that could be your direction tonight.
Okay. And then we would obviously renotice publicly either that hearing or any other public hearing that could follow.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council and everybody here, any consideration going forward of zoning or a zoning adjustment statutorily requires the public notice and the full zoning process, and nothing in the pre-annexation development agreement changes that.
All right. So I have a question. What's the difference between us doing that and just voting no and letting them start over? I don't understand what the difference is. They've already withdrawn? So basically, we've already not approved it?
Councilmember Cunningham, no, not exactly. When it was in front of the council tonight about the possibility of not holding the public hearing, that would have meant that any annexation process would have had to start over at the very beginning. You chose to hold the public hearing, so now you've held that, but you are not bound to approve any annexation, you're not bound to approve any rezoning. So those processes are all still subject to all of the full public notice and statutory procedures, if they're to go forward at all.
So if we do, this is important, if they come back and want a call to a vote for this item, they have to have another public hearing?
On any rezoning, there's going to be a public hearing through the...
No, the annexation.
Process. I'm just trying to be clear because they're tied together, which is what everyone's associating here tonight. So this, there will not, there would not need to be another public hearing on an annexation. There would have to be a separate publicly noticed mayor and council agenda to consider the adoption of an annexation ordinance.
So this is the problem that I have with that. If we leave the public hearing open, then we can, we possibly open ourselves up to being accused of trying to do some fly-by-night, under-the-radar-boat thing, and I'm not going to be part of that.
Well, Paul, two things. When we closed the public hearing, we didn't leave it open. Second, if there becomes an annexation, that's noticed again to everybody so they can come forward. At that point, it'd be more of a call to the audience. But what everybody's, we've not, we're not moving forward on the annexation, and I think that's pretty clear. Carrie's and her clients have said that they're going to engage further with regard to what a zoning or a pata might look like. If that were to ever come back, and they're going to make that choice, whether that comes back or not, all of that process, there are public hearings outside these chambers, inside these chambers, we're all familiar with how that works. And so there would be adequate opportunity, one, for us to modify, you know, the developer can come in and say whatever they want, and we can say no. We can say, if you want to do this, you got to do this, and then they get their choice. But, so I know it's difficult because it's two very parallel processes, but tonight, all we essentially did was hold the public hearing on the annexation. We're not taking action, so in the future, that would have to be noticed if these guys want to go through a zoning, you know, because you can always do translational zoning. They can annex based on what the county's already done, boom, come in, you know? That's a consideration. So we're leaving it. I think the important thing tonight, which I think these guys got, I hope we got, was that you had to open the dialogue, you had to slow it down, you had to have the representative of the developer, I see a couple of them here, listen to what the concerns were, and then they'll make a decision as to how they want to go. We'll see if we see it again. No, no, I don't think so. Carrie?
I should say that.
Carrie, clarify then.
Mayor, members of the council, what I said was, I think what Mr. Rankin was suggesting, which is by virtue of what just occurred tonight, if in fact we were to move forward, we would like the opportunity to work with the neighbors if they're so willing to work with us, and we would have to, we would have to start the process over again.
Okay.
So I don't, we can't pick it up from here. There's a new 45-day time period, if I'm correct, for the annexation, and we, all these hearings would have to happen again. Is that...
So, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if we had not held the public hearing, then any future annexation would have had to start over at the beginning, okay? You've held the public hearing now. That doesn't prevent you from holding any additional public hearings on these matters, okay? You just don't have to have this same public hearing again, okay?
Roger, can you keep the card separate from the people who are doing time?
If you take no further action tonight, what will happen is that Ms. Sylvan's clients will decide to, how to try to engage with the folks who spoke here tonight to try and address some of these issues, to see if the proposed annexation and associated zoning and rezoning will go forward into that process, which is a very public process with required statutory notice.
So I have a question.
And you can schedule any further public hearings that you choose to in connection with either the annexation or the zoning.
Councilor Romero.
I guess my question is, is there an opportunity for mayor and council to direct staff and the developers to have or commit to public engagement with the neighbors in the area?
Mayor, members of the council, that was happening, and that was ongoing, and I need to talk with my clients and figure out what our next steps are, but your direction's clear. Again, it was, it was happening. It had already started, so we'll, we hear you.
So I think that's more of a legal question to the city attorney as to, are we right now in the position, as we close the public hearing, to say, okay, we've listened, and this is the direction that we'd like to take so that if the developers are interested in continuing the process, then that mayor and council direct them to have additional public discussions with the stakeholders?
Yes, and I think you could give the direction to staff, a motion saying that prior to any mayor and council consideration of either the annexation or the original city zoning or rezoning, that there has to be further public engagement of the type that has been described tonight.
Want to make that motion right now?
Hang on.
I think...
Okay, somebody make a motion.
Well, I'm... So moved.
Get a second to that so moved?
Charlie's second.
All right. Any discussions?
Yes. This process has been so confusing to the people involved that I think that we ought to clean it up and vote on the annexation, and I would vote no, and start the process over from scratch. If that's... If that's what your, if that's what your intentions are anyway, let's just clean the slate and begin from scratch. And so I would offer a substitute motion that we reject the annexation and begin the process from scratch.
Second. Can we get a, all right, any discussion on that or a substitute motion to that?
I want to defend my motion. That's what I was talking about before. It doesn't make any difference. It doesn't make any difference if we actually reject it and have them start over or have this thing twisting in the wind. Having it twisting in the wind is dumb. Reject it and let them start over.
And if we vote no to your motion, it's not voting yes to the annexation.
I'm voting to reject the annexation. My motion is to reject the annexation.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. All in favor, let's go roll call.
So this would be on the substitute motion to reject the annexation district.
Yep.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Can you come back to me? It's a pass.
That's fine. Let him be the deciding vote.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
I'm a now. Councilor Durham?
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
All right. So, Mr. Rankin, what does that mean? I don't think it means anything.
So based on, based on the mayor and council's direction, then staff will not circulate the petition to be signed by the relevant property owners.
Okay.
And that any future attempt to move forward with an annexation will start over. Just means the filing of a new blank petition and ultimately a public hearing on these same issues.
But see, it's still, the question still remains about the meeting and engaging the neighbors and stakeholders in the area. That still remains. And so I, I want to make sure that the attorney for the developers and property owners has the opportunity as well to, to have this conversation with, with the developers because now what we've, the, the position we've taken is we start all over. But all over means that there is one public hearing with mayor and council. It doesn't specifically say, let's work and engage with the neighbors to make sure that, that if there's going to be continued conversation about annexation and a development attached with an annexation, that there's public input and a process for, for continued engagement of the neighbors and the stakeholders in the area.
It's already scheduled. So he is in town with his development company.
I think, I think that's off, ma'am. Yep. These guys, these guys said no. They said, Ms. Sylvan, go back to your clients, see if they want to continue to engage and if they do, they'll file something new and we'll start over. And that's it. All right, thank you for being here. Let's move on to item ten. You guys are going to turn into Oro [bleep] Valley.
Wait a minute or I'll call it. Item ten is an intergovernmental agreement with the Pasquayaki tribe to place tribal land within the city of Tucson into trust. Report from city manager, resolution number two three zero eight five. Oh, no, no. City manager's communication, number two ninety-eight, date September fourth, received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read resolution two three zero eight five by number and title only.
Resolution number two three zero eight five relating to intergovernmental agreements, approving and authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Tucson and the Pasquayaki tribe to allow land within the city of Tucson to be placed in trust for the tribe's benefit by the United States of America in declaring an emergency.
What's the council's pleasure? Councilmember Durham?
I move we pass and adopt resolution two three zero eight five.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Resolution...
Mayor, I'd like to point out that the tribal chairman, Mr. Robert Valencia, is in the audience.
Oh, my goodness.
Hey, welcome chairman.
Did you guys, did you guys watch our exercise in democracy the whole evening? Did it make you feel better about what happens at your place? All right. Resolution two three zero eight five passes by a vote of seven zero. Item eleven.
Zoning C nine one nine zero four, Littleton Road, Craigcroft LLC, R one to C one, city manager's report. Report from city manager, report from zoning examiner. Your honor, there is an updated condition to be read into the record. A new condition, item thirteen reads, "An updated traffic analysis shall be completed prior to the development package. Submit approval for any development subsequent to phase one."
City manager's communication number two nine two, date September fourth, received and made part of the record. This is a request to rezone approximately eight point five acres from R one to C one zoning. The rezoning site is located on the southwest corner of Littleton Road and Craigcroft Road. Staff recommends authorization of C one zoning, subject to certain conditions. The zoning examiner recommends approval of C one zoning. Is the applicant or representative present? State your name, who you represent.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Lexi Welland. I'm with the Planning Center located downtown at Two East Congress, Suite 600.
And who's your client?
My client is DCM Development LLC, who represents for the property owner here.
Okay. And are you agreeable or is your client agreeable to the proposed requirements?
Mr. Mayor, yes, we are agreeable to those.
Including to the amended one you heard tonight?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. What's the council's pleasure? Councilman?
Mayor, I'm moved to approve the request for rezoning as recommended by the zoning examiner and with the added items in there. Thank you. Bless.
Thank you.
All right, we got a second. Any discussion?
As a former, as a former faculty member of Lafer Middle School, this is an outstanding development. Congratulations, Richard.
Oh, that's very nice. All those in favor? Aye. Anyone? Yeah, let's get it in there. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming in.
I, it is a good development.
You're excited. Item twelve.
Zoning S E one nine one four, Verizon sixty-one sixty-one, East Grant Road, R three zone, wireless communications facility, special exception land use ordinance adoption. Report from city manager, report from zoning examiner, ordinance number one one six eight zero.
City manager's communication number two ninety-three, date September fourth, is received and made part of the record. This is a special exception land use request for property located north of Grant Road and west of the Wilmot Road alignment. Staff recommends adoption of the ordinance, which establishes conditions for approval. The zoning examiner recommends approval of the special exception request. Is the applicant or representative present on this matter? Ma'am, could you state your name, who you represent?
Nancy Smith, representing Verizon Wireless.
Okay. And is your client agreeable to the proposed requirements?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read ordinance one one six eight zero by number and title only.
Ordinance number one one six eight zero relating to zoning, a special exception land use wireless communication facility, S E one nine one four, Verizon sixty-one sixty-one, East Grant Road, located approximately fifteen hundred feet north of Grant Road and two thousand feet west of the Wilmot Road alignment, approving with conditions the construction of a wireless communication facility disguised as a pine tree, monopine, fifty feet in height with six antennas placed within a six hundred forty square foot lease area, thirty by feet by twenty-one five feet four inches on the southeast western corner of a twenty-two and a half acre parcel in the R three zone and setting an effective date.
What's the council's pleasure? That'd be Cunningham, I think.
Yeah, I move that we pass and adopt. The ordinance is written.
Second.
Got a motion, second? Any discussion on this matter? Hearing none. Go to roll call.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Ordinance one one six eight zero passes by a vote of seven zero. Item thirteen.
Economic development, approval of primary jobs incentive development agreement with Northwest Hospital LLC. Report from city manager, resolution number two three zero eight two.
City manager's communication number two ninety-one, dated September fourth, is received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read resolution two three zero eight two by number and title only.
Resolution number two three zero eight two relating to primary jobs incentive, authorizing and approving the primary jobs incentive development agreement between the city of Tucson and Northwest Hospital LLC to facilitate development of a new hospital facility on the southwest corner of Houghton Road and Old Spanish Trail.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I move we pass and adopt resolution two three zero eight two and we're very happy that this is coming forward.
That's excellent. We got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Resolution two three, two three zero eight two passes by a vote of seven zero. Item fourteen.
Elections canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the city's primary election held August twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen. Report from city manager, resolution number two three zero eight four.
City manager's communication number two ninety-five, date September fourth, received and made part of the record. Mr. Clerk, you're requested to read resolution two three zero eight four by number and title only.
Resolution number two three zero eight four relating to elections canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the primary election held in the city of Tucson, Arizona on August twenty-seventh, two thousand nineteen.
What is the council's pleasure?
You too sure you don't want to demand a recount? No? Okay, I'll then move you in.
I think the numbers, the votes were safely...
All right, so, all right, I'll move you in.
Separated.
Second.
We got a motion and a second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Kazachik?
Aye.
Ms. Romero?
Aye.
Mayor Rothschild?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Mrs. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Durham?
Aye.
Resolution two three zero eight four passes by a vote of seven zero. Item five, item fifteen.
Adjournment?
Council stand adjourned. Next review scheduled meeting will be on Tuesday, September seventeenth, less than two weeks from today, at five thirty P. M. in the mayor and council chambers. Thanks.